I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing, but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville. Talking about my hometown.
Well now we'll welcome everyone to the Monday, June 10th, uh, Fayetteville City Council Meeting. At this time, we'll ask that you would stand for the invocation. We ask that you would please remain standing, join us in the Pledge Allegiance. And we'll be led on the prayer today by our very own Bishop Larry Wright.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you now thanking you for being such a good God. Thank you for your wisdom, your guidance, your love and mercy. Bless this session tonight. God, as we go through the agenda, we pray that you would give us the wisdom, the insight, to make the best choices for the people and for this city. Bless our mayor, our city council, our first responders and staff, and all those, God, that come together to support and to make this a great city. There are many issues, God, that lay before us now. We need your help. We need your guidance. Jesus said in Matthews 26 that the poor will always be with us. We pray, God, that you would help us as a council and as a city to solve the problems that are before us for the betterment of our city and the future of our people, that we'll all work together as one. Bless us now, oh God, as we sit before your throne to be the voice of the people. Lead us and guide us now, and we'll praise your name forever. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Bishop Wright. We will have to ask you to tell us a little bit about yourself because we know you, so thank you. Uh, and we would also like to welcome our special guest, uh, from the Fayetteville Cumberland County Youth Council, uh, Ms. Joyce. I don't want to mispronounce your last name, so can you introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Okay. Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Joyce Depumbi. I am a recent graduate of the Cumberland Polytechnic High School, as well as the outgoing chair of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. Um, I'm sitting here today, for the very last time, to say thank you. Told myself I wasn't going to get emotional. Um, because of you and your contributions, I have spent the last two years of my life finding ways to serve my community, learning more about local government, and growing as a leader. Youth Council has brought me so many opportunities and opened so many doors for me. It has bettered my understanding of life itself and what it means to give back. This past Saturday, the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council held its very first alumni circle dinner. We invited FCYC members from past years, even the very first year, and it was truly amazing to see the amount of success and excellence that came from Youth Council. I was so pleased to meet the individuals who paved the way for us and for them to see how much we've accomplished because of it. I am proud to say that I will be attending Howard University in the fall, and I can only hope that when I return for the next alumni dinner, I can inspire those younger than me the way the past alumna- alumni have inspired me. Thank you again to Mayor Colvin and all city council members for this, for this opportunity. Being a part of Youth Council is something that I will cherish forever and I will forever be grateful for, so thank you.
Well, we, we certainly wish you well. We hope that as you go and get that very prestigious education from the Howard Bisons, uh, that you come back to your hometown with those talents, okay? But thank you, uh, for what you're doing and good luck to you. Uh, at this time, council, we will have item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. Look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, approve the agenda.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Wright, a second by Councilmember Hare. Uh, any discussion on the motion to approve? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those present. Motion carries. Item 6.0 is the consent, uh, items and, uh, part of discussion, uh, as we submit the motion, uh, I will call upon you, but the item 6.03 is an item that I had, uh, would like to ask that you include in your motion as well as item 6.07. And I see Councilmember Waddell, did you have an item?
Yes, item. Yes, please. If we can pull item 6.02 for discussion.
Okay, any others?
6.06. Motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor. Pulling 6.02, 6.03, 6.06, 6.07.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, uh, to approve with those exceptions, as a second by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Uh, we'll start with item 6.02. Councilmember Waddell.
Thank you. Mr. Bauer, if you wouldn't mind coming up and giving some explanation about change 2019-47, CPO 2017-53. And then I have a couple of, after you go over, if you don't hit my, my questions, I'll ask you some specific questions, if that's okay.
I'll do my best, ma'am. Uh, Kristoff, our deputy city manager, talking about item 6.02. And this is two actions tonight, uh, two, a budget amendment, and then two of capital project ordinance amendments. One is to set up funding for potential improvements to the Hurley Plaza for its naming, which is, includes $45,000 worth of general fund dollars, and then an allowance of private funds of about $105,000 for a total project of 150. The other project is an existing project with had, had a $1.495 million budget for the Plaza project, which is the infrastructure project between the projects, the, the Prince Charles Hotel, the stadium, and the mixed-use building under construction. We're asking for additional $200,000 to make up for some costs that were incurred, uh, in the early days of opening the project due to some things we had to do in order to get the temporary certificate of occupancy to get into the building when the stadium opened. And, uh, that required us to move pretty quickly, as you may have watched, to put in some asphalt, it's for fans' first look, which happened in the middle of a thunderstorm. And then that, uh, unfortunately had to come back up because, of course, it was put in the middle of a thunderstorm. We had to come back out and put that back in for a first day, which was another, uh, we actually did a very good job, but it was done between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And, that comes at a bit of a premium, though both of the contractors gave us very good pricing despite the fact that they were working in very poor conditions. But those plus some additional fencing costs and other things that were unanticipated in the budget, uh, this comes to us, is why we're asking for additional $200,000 to supplement those costs tonight.
I think you, you essentially summed up what, what my question was, but I just want to, uh, be very direct and ask, is this $200,000, uh, essentially, can it be likened to cost overruns due to the work that had to be done to prepare the stadium for the, for the fans' first look for that opening?
It certainly were unanticipated costs that had to do with the delay in the project, which were caused by a number of pro- number of factors. And because we had to move very quickly and do some work that's temporary in nature and won't have to be redone. But it was definitely to get in there for those two events. And of course, we would have had to do that even if we hadn't, well, if we hadn't done fan first look, we certainly would have had to be on our first day.
Okay, one more question. Had we have, had we have, I'll forego my question.
All right, Councilman Chris?
Uh, Mr. Bauer, three thing. First, I want you to let our viewers and our people in the audience know why we have to have a street there, why Hurley Plaza. Would you explain that emergency vehicles and other?
Absolutely. So that-
People know that.
The area between those buildings there provides emergency access, uh, to and from the stadium and the other projects. So it's required by the fire code that you have access in case of emergency.
It has to actually be a street.
It has to be drivable by emergency vehicles, that's correct.
Right, okay. Now, the other point is, of the 245, what portion of that do you anticipate for downtown redevelopment, and what portion for memorials and signage at Hurley Plaza?
Forty-five thousand is going toward the memorials and signage for Hurley Plaza.
How much?
Forty-five.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, any further questions?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. My intent with having this poll was to be able to have the votes separated in terms of the item. There are three different components to this particular item. You've got BOA 2019-16, CPO 2019-33, CPOA 2019-47. My intent was to have be, the first two items go for a vote, and then the last one go to a vote separate and apart from the first two. So if, if that can be the motion that I would, or if that can be put forward in a motion, that would be my, my request.
That's a, that's seconded. All right, so your motion is to approve the first two items that you, that you articulated, uh, for a separate vote? Okay, so there's a motion by Councilmember Waddell.
Mr. Mayor, point of, point of order, and, and just for clarity, that's BOA 2019-16 and CPO 2019-33. Thank you.
Okay, all right, there's a motion by Councilmember Waddell, uh, to approve two of the, uh, items that were discussed, as a second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, unanimous? All right, uh, Councilmember Waddell?
So my second motion would be to disapprove CPOA 2019-47.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilmember Waddell, uh, in opposition of the second item, which CPO, can you read that out just so that, uh, they can-
CPOA 2019-47.
I will second that for the purpose of allowing discussion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so there is a second by Councilmember Chris. Now we are in the discussion phase. Councilmember Chris?
Uh, Councilmember Waddell, would you care to iterate why you are opposed to that particular part of this budget ordinance amendment?
Certainly, Mr. Crisp. My opposition stands, stands in light of the fact that, as we were having a conversation, as this was all playing out about the fans' first look, and one of the questions that I, the question that I, I forewent as far as asking Mr. Bauer, was to give us a rundown on what the actual cost for fans' first look was. In light of the fact that we are having budget conversations, it makes me hyper-aware of how the, the citizens' money is being spent. And so as we looked at this, and I, I referred back to the conversations that was, were taking place as we were moving toward the fans' first look, I do recall there being a lot of conversation about us not being ready, and about there being a lot of things that had to be done in order to complete the project. I remember the night prior, how heavy it rained. With my husband having the, the work, the, doing the work that he does, I'm familiar with how that affects having to lay crush and run in asphalt to prepare a road. So I knew that it was a very temporary solution to the end of being able to have the fans' first look. I also knew that it was going to be very costly to do something like that because you have these trucks running, and whether that they're not accustomed to running in, to do work that they're not accustomed to doing under those conditions. And so I feel like the, the, I feel like this overrun could have been prevented. How, I'm not quite sure, but I'm not in support of an additional $200,000 to make up for what I would consider an errant judgment.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can we ask Mr. Bauer?
Well, we have, uh, ye- yes, sir. Since you asked the question, uh, we'll have that, and then I'll go to Councilmember Hare. Uh, Mr. Bauer?
What, what part of this money, Mr. Bauer, is being allocated for Hay Street redevelopment site and plaza?
The, for the Plaza project, this is, it's $200,000.
$200,000. And we're going to use that $200,000 to do what, as specific as you can be at this time?
Well, we're using it to make up for the funds that were spent outside of the original budget plan.
But what will the $200,000 be used for on Hurley Plaza and all specifically? The street itself and-
Actually, the, the Hay Street portion, the one portion of the street that actually leads up to Hay Street, the portion that goes toward Ray Avenue, we think is probably good and probably can stick with that. But the portion that goes to Hay Street is at the wrong elevation, only to come back out and go back down. We have some planters, we have some trees and other things on the other side, we have lights that go on that side, so additional improvements on the rest of the Plaza. We also have, some of the Plaza is currently in asphalt, it's planned to be, come back in in pavers and concrete, other improvements currently the, the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh, Councilmember Hare, and then I have a question, and then Councilmember Dawkins.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Deputy, um, oh. Mr. Deputy Manager. Going back to that, um, because I'm trying to see exactly where we're headed. If, if we had not have done the opening fans' night that particular night, and so I say it was scheduled further down the road, and the, the work would have, what's my question? What was the, sort of like the recycle part of what took place that perhaps is being done twice or maybe three times since that particular night? Help me understand-
Right.
-the, the use of the money.
The portion of the costs that, basically the asphalt and street work that we did specifically for fans' first look that we had to redo shortly thereafter, was approximate cost of about $48,000.
Okay, if, if the project had gone, I don't want to say according to plan, but if the, if the project would have been on a, where within our scheduling would this been have done, may have been done once, just one time instead of us going back, doing it twice? I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand.
Right. Certainly, we had anticipated that, uh, the stadium would have been turned over to the city a month before it was turned over to us.
Right.
Had it been turned over to us with that month to do the work, we would have completed the entire project, uh, on time and on budget.
Now, did some of those, could you give an account, uh, for those particular delays? I mean, like, what took place that we had these delays?
That, that's a very complex conversation, sir, and I'm not sure I can give you just one thing, they'll tell you what caused those.
So there were a number of things such as-
That's right. No, well, certainly, uh, if you ask Barton Mallow, what their main justification would be Hurricane Florence.
Hurricane Florence, okay. Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, uh, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. Uh, and I did have that out of order, I had Councilmember Arp, Slight, and then Dawkins, but I did have a question for you. So part of the cost, um, we had to redo some things, uh, there was an elevations difference, correct?
There is, still remains an elevation difference on the Hay Street side that will have to be redone.
Part of this additional cost was to put in the additional lift pumps and what it took to overcome the elevation difference? It didn't, wasn't that installed in the Plaza?
Uh, it is installed in the Plaza, but that's not part of the Plaza project cost. That cost is, uh, to the actual stadium project because that was caused by a, a flaw in the way they installed the sewer. That is certainly a significant part of why the project in the Plaza was delayed, is because of that additional sewer work that had to be done.
So, so various construction items caused delays that, that had a chain reaction, which is common in, in construction, a particular project that size. Um, but I guess what I heard you say is the part of this that is related to, uh, preparation for that specific timeline was about 48,000. Did I hear you say that?
That's right.
Not the 200,000?
Correct.
Okay. All right, uh, Councilman Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, um, Councilwoman Waddell for bringing this up. Uh, Mr. Bauer, I, I think that the key thing is, is to make sure that we separate apples from oranges. So 48,000 paid for the asphalt, the temporary road that was put in, uh, for fans' first look. The question I would ask is, that, that road had to come in anyhow, right? And, and really, the driving factor was rain, not just that night, but all the preceding weeks before. And, and for those of us who've done a little bit of construction, it wasn't going to dry out in time to put that road in sufficiently the way you wanted to in a permanent manner. Um, is that, is that a fair statement?
It is a fair statement, sir.
Okay, so, I mean, i- it is what it is, not what we wanted, but, I mean, we went through one of the winest, wettest periods of time that I can remember, and we just got through it a drought, and now we're back in a wet cycle, and, you know, five inches of rain this weekend, weather is weather, and you just have to deal with it. The thing I wanted to highlight, though, is the, the rest of that money's going to pay for the permanent road that's going to go in there, and that's going to be called Hurley Way in honor of the former mayor.
It is.
And that will be a part of the total Hurley Plaza package, which will beautify the rest of the, the Plaza there when, when it's complete, to tie it into everything that's happening along with the Prince Charles Hotel and the Hyatt, uh, Hotel.
Absolutely.
Okay? And the date, when do we expect that to be complete?
Fully complete?
Yes.
Uh, 2021.
2021, so about 18 months away?
Correct.
And, uh, and, and in that way, the, the exterior part of the stadium will match the interior part of the stadium as far as quality of appearance?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bauer.
Thank you, Councilman Arp. Councilman Dawkins?
Uh, Mr. Bauer, I, thank you, thank you. Okay, I've got three questions for you. Number one, I'm trying to recall, um, how much money we ever had to pay if we missed that first game?
Liquidated damages from missing opening day would have been $50,000.
$50,000, okay. All right, thank you. And, um, are we still in negotiations with our insurance carrier and Barton Mallow over Hurricane Florence damage, uh, because that's not been settled, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and we're asking, or they asked for a million, we've got a couple hundred thousand dollar deductible, we're asking our insurance for seven or eight hundred thousand? Which could accrue to the city?
Uh, I think it's a little more complex than that, sir, but there's certainly a significant amount of money in dispute.
Okay, and that would, that would accrue to the city, and if we do get some of that money, it'll go to the general fund?
If we get any funding from insurance, it'll offset any claims that are currently outstanding.
Okay, and the last question is, um, on this, we're not actually borrowing any money, it's coming out of the general fund, we're not, uh, adding to the, um, the money we've already borrowed on the bonds? This is coming out of the general fund?
That's correct.
I can't, uh, support, um, the motion. There was so much, uh, weather during that time, so many other issues, and, um, I'm on, although I thank the world of, of Council Lady Waddell, I'm, I, I'm very pleased that our stadium looks great and we're benefiting from it, and especially our downtown merchants. Thank you, Mr. Bauer.
Thank you, Mr. Dawkins. Councilman Wright?
Uh, yes, Mr. Bauer. I just wanted to say, based upon what all, all constituents have been talking about, um, the comment was made of poor judgment, um, but I don't see how, we, we went through two major storms during the time of the construction, is that right?
We certainly had a, in the week just before we opened, as Councilmember Arp mentioned, we had significant rain events.
And, um, based upon what we're talking about, because of the month delay, uh, you were saying there was, there was a month delay, and a lot of that was because of the weather?
That is certainly the, the current position, correct, sir?
Uh-huh. Um, additional, the, the additional sewer work that we're talking about for the, is that the Plaza?
It's the sewer line that serves the stadium, and of course, all the other projects that feed into that infrastructure.
Okay, can you talk to me about the, the additional, the sewer line and how that played a part in, that, that, does that play a part in the 200 grand?
It, it did. It, it made it, because of that work had to occur very late in the project, it delayed, uh, the city getting in and, and completing the Plaza work. So it, it resulted in the, the last minute work that had to be accomplished.
Okay, so when you're talking about investments, and I am very proud of the stadium, so i- it's, it's investment, and, and although, you know, the 200 grand, none of us like, uh, really going back and having to do that, but I think this is a, this is an investment for the long term, and then, uh, my, uh, Councilmember Dawkins gave us the numbers as far as, in the long run, we're going to coop that money back. Is that something that you can say that will recoup that 200 back with the investment of the pla- of the Plaza and also the stadium overall?
There isn't anything that will directly bring money back into the budget specific for this project, but there certainly is, uh, if you talk about economic development in general, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later on, that there's certainly a significant positive economic impact of this projects in this area, once the Plaza project is necessary to support.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wright. Uh, Councilman, Councilman Mayor Proton, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Mine's, um, mine's more about timing. Um, do we anticipate beginning the Hay Street side improvements, um, in the next 30, 60, 90 days?
Probably closer to the 90 days.
Probably closer to 90, and-
That approach needs to stay there in order to keep the TCO operational for the stadium.
For the stadium.
So we're looking for a window that's long enough for us to be able to take it out, re, change the elevation, and then put it back in successfully before that access is needed. So we're waiting for probably, unfortunately, I probably have to wait until the, the woodpecker season comes to a close.
Right, and the reason I ask is, by doing this capital project ordinance amendment in the month of June, it's actually coming out of our current fiscal year budget versus, we're not going to start anything until the next fiscal year, and there could be potential for cost increases, we don't know yet. So would it make more sense to delay this portion another, say till August, until we get a better timeline on when it's going to start, and then we take it out of next year's budget? It's still coming from the same source. It's just, to me, it's a matter of timing, using, you know, this year's funds for something we're going to start next year.
Uh, a- as you know, capital projects move mo- through multiple years.
Right.
The reason why we brought this to you tonight is because we're bringing to you the other amendment, which had to do with the same Plaza, uh, area and project. Um, it certainly, uh, could be deferred if council had that, that interest. Um, we just have to bring it back to you again at another time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you. Mr. Bauer, section three of the document that I was referencing indicates that the, that the following revenues are anticipated to be available to the city to complete the project. The first line item is from the general fund transfer of $1,245,000. And then there's a line item from the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Division for a quarter of a million dollars, totaling $1,495,000, correct?
Correct.
This $200,000 is not what we need to do the project, it's additional money that's needed to complete the project, is that correct?
It is additional funding, ma'am.
Okay, so I just wanted to be very clear about that, and I- Okay, so I just wanted to be very clear about that, and I, I would also like to go on record as saying, I think that we did a very good job with the baseball stadium. But I do stand by my point that I think we made, we may have made collectively as a council, not individually, some decisions that have put us in a position where now we have this two-hundred thousand dollar overrun that may have been able to be avoided if we would have, if we would have looked at things from a different vantage point. Now, I have a question for you. This is being boasted as an overrun due to delays on behalf of the developer who built the stadium, essentially. Had they turned it over, we would have had time to do it without extra hoopla. So, my question is, when we have an agreement or a contract with a developer who is responsible for meeting a particular timeline, and they don't meet that timeline, which causes the city to have to incur costs that they otherwise would not incur, is there something in the contract that protects the interest of the city that puts at fault the developer versus the city where these overruns are concerned?
Certainly, ma'am. In this case, we had a couple of different provisions that relate to that. First is liquidated damages. You negotiate liquidated damages, uh, in a contract, and you look to those to, uh, when it's hard to quantify in advance what your damages might be, you actually contractually agree to what those damages will be set at. In this case, we set our liquidated damages at a thousand dollars per day, plus fifty thousand dollars if a game is meet, met, is missed for each game. So, that was the negotiated liquidated damages clause that's inside that contract. There are, of course, defenses to liquidated damages, where the other party can come back and say, well, it was force majeure or acts of God that caused us to be late, and therefore, we don't owe liquidated damages. In contract law, you either take the liquidated damages, or you take the consequential damages. In this case, we negotiated liquidated damages, so that would be our most, that'd be opportunity to look for that. Now, if there's negligence or other claims, and that goes part of litigation, where you might want to seek additional damages under those kinds of things that are unusual, that could, could have occurred.
Alright, uh, Councilman Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be brief. I think the, the biggest lesson learned, Council, Councilwoman Waddell is, uh, we don't, we don't belong in the construction business. The city does not belong in the construction business. And, uh, and, and the fact that we took that project on, we being the city trying to accomplish it, uh, in, in a very complicated footprint, uh, site, uh, and a timeline that was, uh, compressed because of the weather. I, in my opinion, it would have been better for us to have had a turnkey project, uh, and that'll be my recommendation for every project we do in the future, that we don't participate in the construction process. We let people who do that for a living do it, whether it's paving roads or building buildings. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, and Council, I think we have, uh, had.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh.
I pushed my light for.
Is your light on again, sir?
Well, the point of order, I just want to clarify, the motion is to deny the funding. If you're in favor of the motion to deny the funding, you would push the green light.
That's correct.
If you want to defeat the motion, you push the red light.
Yes, sir.
Alright, I just want to make sure we.
What, that? Alright, Mr. Chris has made it clear. This motion on the floor is to deny, uh, funding for, uh, the construction of the Plaza. So, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. This is a motion to deny. Alright, Madam Clerk, that is nine, uh, eight to one, uh, voting in favor of the motion to deny. It's Councilmember Waddell voting in opposition. Councilman Chris, Cullington, Arp, Wright, Colvin, Moan, Hare, and Dawkins.
Mr. Mayor?
Motion fails.
Yes, sir, Councilman Arp? I'd like to make an alternative motion, if I may, that the Council approved capital project ordinance amendment change twenty nineteen hyphen forty-seven.
So, it's a motion by Councilmember Arp to approve, there's a second by Councilmember Wright, uh, any discussion on that motion? Alright, Council, I'll look to you for your votes.
You cleared the board, Mr. Mayor.
I did. Alright, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous, I mean, pardon me, eight to one. Uh, those voting in favor, uh, Councilman Chris, Cullington, Arp, Wright, Colvin, Moan, Hare, and Dawkins. Those voting in opposition, Councilmember Waddell. Uh, and, uh, just prior to us moving on, uh, I think, Council, at some point, we will need to discuss a policy change on the amount or the, the cost limits of the projects that we keep in-house versus, uh, outsourcing, which is probably a conversation for a different day. Uh, alright, so, uh, item six point zero three, uh, it's probably Mr. Bauer. Where are you at, sir? Oh, Mr. Brad, okay. How are you, sir?
Um.
You look the same except for the mustache.
Like you type, but, um, so the purpose of, um, me pulling this was just to explain, uh, to the citizens about, uh, renovations taking place on the airport. Uh, we all know that they are occurring, um, but recently, you briefed Council on the fact that, uh, some of the estimates that you had received a couple of years ago are now different, and so, the money that you're asking for tonight is for what exactly?
The, the, the money in this, uh, CAM is to, uh, re- redesign through and implement the value engineering that we've determined will bring the project, uh, within our original budget. And, uh, so this will be for the seventeen services of, uh, engineers for various disciplines to bring that to a bid in July, which will qualify us to, uh, accept, uh, some fourteen million dollars from the FAA.
And so, the, the cost of the renovations were broken down into phases, so you're in phase?
Two, this will be phased, we're working on phase two. Phase one is, uh, still being wrapped up, uh, and so that, that part, uh, will be finished in the next couple of months, uh, if the weather holds. And, um, and then we'll, in November, we hope to start, uh, phase two, which will be the front side of, of the building, the whole ticketing baggage and s- second story of, uh, non-secure area.
So, the total amount of the renovations from phase one and two, uh, for improvements on our airport, or?
Well, it's estimated, uh, we're hoping our contractors will come within budget, around forty-five million dollars.
Okay, so, so great, pretty substantial investment at the airport, and so, uh, that is something that, uh, has been, uh, pretty important to me. And so, you'll come back to the City Council with some alternatives, uh, and some new design work is what you're?
Well, we, we have, uh, shared that with the city manager, and I think he shared it with you all. I do have that available, but, um, I don't, I don't know how to run that thing over there, but, uh, we, we have a picture we've distributed, and, uh, we can start to, uh, promote that.
Show the pictures so that the citizens can see.
Yeah.
And the last thing.
We're going to be, we're going to be back after the bid process, uh, for you all to approve hopefully the contract.
And, and Mr. Witit, uh, right before I go to a couple of other council members, uh, the money that, that the renovations, uh, is being paid from, we're receiving grants from the federal government, is that correct?
Yes, a variety of sources, uh, a large portion is from the Federal Aviation Administration. We have, we have some passenger facility charges we've been collecting, uh, the airport has retained earnings, uh, over twenty years, uh, be going toward the project. We're looking to apply for some TSA money, and we have some customer facility charges.
And, and the last, last question I'll ask before I go to Councilmember Chris, the, the allocation or the appropriation you're asking for tonight comes out of the airport's fund, which is a separate fund.
That's correct.
It generates its own revenue, correct?
Yes, airport reserves.
Okay, alright, Councilman Chris?
Well, I just want to make sure that the citizens understand what's going on here. We're renovating the airport, but the majority of the money is coming from FAA, is that correct?
A majority of it, yes.
And we anticipate that this total renovation cost might be somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-five million dollars, is that correct?
That's correct.
With the majority of that money coming out of Washington DC, is that correct?
Well, a majority of it, yes.
I want to make sure they understand. So, this, this budget ordinance amendment tonight is simply to authorize the use of money that's already in that airport fund, is that right?
That's correct.
But the good part of it is, we're asking the mayor to accept a grant from FHA for over seventeen million dollars, is that right?
It's around fourteen million, yes.
Make sure you got ink in your pen, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I just want the public to understand that nothing is coming from the general fund. We're just moving some money here, and the mayor's going to sign, accepting a grant from FHA for about seventeen million, six-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars as a part of that renovation project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, brother.
Thank you, Councilman Chris. Councilman Cullington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, Councilman Chris, uh, really highlighted what I was going to say. Uh, I think the only caveat I'll say is that the initial plans, uh, were really scaled back dramatically in, in some sense, without sacrificing any function of the airport, is that correct?
That's correct, and I do have a photo with before and after rendering, if you, if you want to show it on the overhead.
Yeah, and so I just wanted to clarify that for the public to know that, uh, we are being good stewards of that money and, and, and making the hard choices in order to scale back the initial, uh, concepts in order to, to have a cost savings and not have any loss of function of the airport and the amenities.
We're still modernizing the front side, but we've scaled back the, the grandeur of it.
With some value engineering and keeping the same amenities that were initially, uh, looked at?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cullington. Alright, uh, there are no more questions for, uh, Mr. Witit? Yep, need a motion to, uh, to approve or not?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright, so there's a motion to approve, uh, adopt the budget ordinance amendment as listed. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Second by Councilmember Dawkins. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Alright, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Alright, Council, item six point zero six, Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Ba- (laugh) Mr. Bauer, you're already up here. Thank you.
You might as well have a seat in the front row, sir.
I stay close.
Alright, Mr. Bauer, um, questions for you about this parking garage. This is the, in December of two thousand seventeen, uh, the Council voted to approve about fourteen point eight million dollars, uh, for the, uh, parking deck across the street. And in our packet, it says that the, uh, project manager, developer, Hay Street Pad Development, Hay Street Development Pad LLC is recommending that we cap the, uh, motion or the amount of money to fifteen million, nine-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand. Is that your understanding also?
Second, sir, I'll pull up the contract and make sure that, that number is exactly right. It's fifteen, nineteen, nine-sixty-seven, eight-eight-eight.
Okay, and what we're voting on tonight, my understanding is, a mi- we're going to put a million dollars more into the project, and then we're going to go fifty-fifty on everything above that. So, if it's one point two million, it, we'd put in a million, and we'd end up putting in right at a hundred thousand, maybe a little bit less. Is that, um, the way you s- see this playing out?
The proposal tonight would be that there's u- up to one point five of additional funding being provided. One million being provided, uh, with initial costs, and then the rest of it on a fifty-fifty basis, dollar for dollar, share with the development company, up to an additional five hundred thousand dollars.
Alright, because I support getting this, this parking garage finished now, um, and I trust, I trust, but, uh, to quote, uh, another politician, I, I do want to verify, um, and I'd asked for an accounting and hadn't gotten that yet, but then tonight, before the meeting, you said that you would send, send out the accounting. Uh, but it looks like, based on everything I've read so far, it looks like we're okay. And, uh, what, what concerned me is I'm trying to figure out what the additional cost is, because I've been assured by the fellow pouring the concrete that the concrete cost has not gone up per cubic yard, but I'm assuming that we're pouring more cubic yards of concrete. Is that a fair understanding?
I believe that certainly is part of the cost, as with any complex project, that it's hard to point to a single item. As I understand it, the initial estimate that developed this contract was done, uh, before the final design was completed. And final design, when the actual engineers got involved, the transfer plate, which is the top section of concrete that you can see out there right now, uh, needed to be enlarged significantly, along with some of the support piers. And the other costs, as I understand it, was that there was a lot of reshoring that had to do, and that's, as, as you watch the project, you may have seen the metal piers that stayed inside the project for a long time. In fact, those metal piers weren't able to start coming out until the transfer plate was put in a couple, starting about a month and a half ago. And that's led to some significant increase in costs and the delays in the project as well, because they weren't able to work on the lower floors of the project until they got to the very top floor, and now able to go back in and fill the rest of the project. So, I believe those are the major factors. We do have Jordan Jones, who's here, may have a better idea and more information, if you'd like to ask him.
Alright, couple more questions that I may have for Mr. Jones. Um, on page four and five of the agreement, it talked about the city clerk of the city of Wilmington. Is that just a typographical error?
Uh, no, I, I think that that is a, an, an accurate reference, but I'll go back and check to make sure.
Okay, so the city clerk of Wilmington would be signing off, uh, as a noted republic instead of our city clerk?
No, no, of course not. That would be an error.
Okay, so that's a typographical, that's fine. I mean, I, I know clerical errors happen, no problem.
Oh, we fixed that one.
Okay, and then, um, in, in another one of the agreements, it talked about the other real estate that, that would be counting towards their commitment, um, increasing the, uh, do you see it? Are you seeing it now?
Oh, yeah, I saw it.
(laugh) Um, so you know I read it.
Yeah.
Um, so, going from thirty-eight million to forty-five million, it's talking about the other facilities being, uh, one is the hotel, and the other, there's a term for that office building, I, I can't.
Class A office space.
Class A office space, alright, um, and could any other real estate purchased by Hay Street Development Pad LLC or any of the other LLCs, let's say another building on Hay Street, could it count in this package situation?
Just to give a little more context, so you can follow the answer that I give you, sir, what this contract provides is that the development company is guaranteeing that the end of the project, certain elements of that project will achieve a minimum tax value, and therefore, generate a minimum amount of tax revenue coming back to the city as a benefit into the future. And what they've done is they've, uh, in here, you'll see, they've actually established a specific amount of tax value for each of three projects.
Correct.
Festival Park Plaza, the Prince Charles, and this mixed-use development. And that is actually, uh, recorded with those specific properties. So, that obligation goes to those specific properties. So, what they do with buying other projects or whatever the, other developments they make are, don't have any impact on those commitments that are specific to those properties.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Bauer. I had some other questions, but, um, Mr. Mayor, let me go ahead and make a motion to.
Well, we got, we got a few more questions, so I'll circle back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer.
Alright, alright, uh, Mr. Bauer, so, um, you know, I've said, I've said all along that, that, uh, the contract that we had to build the parking deck, uh, is backed by a performance bond, so, to me, that, that's a contract. But, as we've heard tonight and some other things, it cost change over the duration of projects for weather and unforeseen and material increase and so forth. Um, I need to talk tonight a little bit about, uh, economic development. You know, my, my, uh, viewpoint was that, um, the parking deck is kind of a foundation for some buildings to be constructed on top.
Literally.
Which have a taxable value. So, one of the buildings that it had, uh, and the Mayor Pro Tim may, may hit a little more of this in detail, uh, was estimated around twenty million dollars, tw- twenty million, six hundred dollars, uh, for, uh, what is that, hotel? What is that? And then, there was another estimate for around thirteen million for the hotel, twenty million for the office space. So, that's around thirty-three million dollars of construction that'll take place on top of the parking deck that will be taxed at values of that much or greater, but at a minimum of that, those amounts, is that right?
Well, and that is actually the guaranteed tax value, uh, the construction cost is likely to be higher.
So, to me, uh, this was more about economic development and job creation and building the tax base than it was renegotiating a contract that, to me, was already negotiated. But, uh, Mayor Pro Tim is gonna, gonna ask something, just to make sure that the, the general public understands, uh, the whole package that's presented here today. But I did have a question for you. Part of the concerns that we had were, what are the city's protections for the money in the event, uh, construction doesn't occur at a certain time? Uh, can you, can you talk about that a little bit?
Certainly. Uh, we have, in this contract, added a specific date for the initiation of construction, it's October first. So, that is now a term of the contract. If they do not move forward with that, it is a breach of contract, and we would be able to, uh, take any remedies that were available for breaching that contract, including exercising, uh, the current commitments to that taxable value payment, which is secured by those properties that's been filed against.
Okay, alright, uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Um, this is more for public clarity, but when we entered in the original agreements with the Prince Charles holding, we were looking at Prince Charles Hotel, the parking deck, the hotel on top. Originally, there was going to be some condos, and that has now switched to a little over a hundred thousand square feet of class A office space. We also had to purchase a piece of land where the fountain used to be, so we could have. We also had to purchase a piece of land where the fountain used to be, so we could have the Hurley Plaza. And then we sold Prince Charles a piece of land. So we did a land swap. They also agreed to purchase the Festival Park Plaza Building. And then what's not reported too often in the newspaper is part of these agreements, the Festival Plaza Building, they are 10-year contract renting 59 parking spaces at $50 a month for a year, for 10 years, generating $35,400 a year in revenue. The new parking deck, roughly 250 spaces for the office space, 120 for parking for the new hotel, and 90 for the old Prince Charles. That's going to generate about $276,000 a year in reoccurring revenues for parking. In totality between those projects, that's roughly $311,400 reoccurring, just for parking spaces, rented parking spaces. In our downtown development agreement, number four, they guaranteed a minimum taxable value of $37 million. In this new agreement tonight, they're guaranteeing a minimum taxable value of $45 million, which will generate an additional $41,965 a year in ad valorem taxes under the current tax rate. Prior to PCH purchasing Prince Charles, we were paying approximately $480,000 a year in debt service to pay for the Prince Charles Hotel, because we owned it.
Festival Park.
Festival Park Plaza Building, I'm sorry, Festival Park Plaza Building, just in debt service. We also entered into a five-year agreement with Prince Charles to lease some of that space. And then earlier this year, they let us out of some space we no longer needed, at no penalty, saving us about $50,000 more in less lease payments this year for the next four years. We budgeted $211,100 for leased space, about 50 grand more, you know, for the next four years. But at the same time, we quit paying that $480,000 in debt service, because we put it back on the tax rolls. The Prince Charles Hotel, you know, when it was, property taxes were paid on it the last couple of years, came in at $1,673, according to the Cumberland County Tax Administration. That's what they paid in property tax. With this new combined $45 million in tax value between the three projects, the city will now receive roughly $269,775 in ad valorem tax, which is, you know, $2,600, $268,000 more before these projects came. And then if you add, so that 269 plus about the 300 for the parking, annual parking lease, plus the savings on the sale of the Prince Charles, we're getting roughly a million dollars more. We will start in 2021 in revenues, reoccurring revenues every year because of that development. Nothing to do with the stadium, roughly a million dollars. Does that kind of sound right?
It does.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Waddell?
Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Temp, you really hit on much of what I wanted to say, but very succinctly. I just want to, there's been a lot of conversation about this parking deck, and about who can and who cannot use this parking deck. And I just want to be very clear, for the purposes of our viewing audience and those of you in the room tonight, the parking deck is a public parking deck. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
The parking deck is not a private deck. What has happened is, which is an anomaly in comparison to the Franklin Street parking deck, before it has even been completed, the spaces have been leased. So it's not that you can't use it, and there are some spaces still available. Is that correct?
We expect that there will be capacity.
It will be at capacity, or there will still be capacity?
There will still be capacity.
Right. So I just really wanted to clarify that, because I know I've seen a lot on social media, I've read a bit in the paper, and it just seems that there's some uncertainty as to whether it's a public deck or a private deck. And using public dollars for a private deck would be ludicrous, and I don't think that anybody on this dais would do something like that. However, it is a public facility, which, as Mayor Pro Tim Mon has indicated, is currently under lease for many of the spaces, which is a benefit, because it means that we're not building something that's not going to return revenue back to the city. Would that be an accurate summarization?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. Councilman Chris?
Mr. Bauer, I want you to go over, because Councilman Dawkins said we're going from 38 to 45 million. That could very well be a misleading statement. I need you to clarify for our public how we're going from 38 to 45 and what that means.
Well, he's talking about the minimum taxed assessed value, which is guaranteed under the contract for the projects that are being privately developed.
For 30, for 30 how much?
37 million is the current guarantee.
Thank you.
Under this proposal, that would increase to 45 million. So they're guaranteeing a higher level of value.
So what you're saying, then, is that the Prince Charles Holding is willing to see that we get ad valorem taxes of 45 million, even if those properties are appraised for less than that? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. I want the public to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cullerton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a few points I'd like to hit on, but I'll first piggyback off of what Mr. Crisp is talking about in the increase of 7 million or so, a little over 7 million in the guaranteed tax base of this project, should council see fit to move forward with this. That amount over the years will pay back all but around 14,000, 17,000, somewhere in there, of what we intend possibly to move forward with, this 1.5?
If I remember correctly, sir, the calculation we did over a 15-year period, because remember initially when we were talking about this, we were talking about using debt. But we did, council decided to use cash instead. So over, we initially did this payback over 15 years, because we were thinking about financing it for 15 years. But if you look at over 15 years, the increased minimum tax that we paid is about 1, almost 1.5 million dollars, about 1.47 something. Do you remember? She's not even looking at me. But it's very close to 1.5.
Any money that this council decides to put forth tonight towards this, even if it's a full 1.5, will be returned by this increased tax value and the revenues generated off that?
You would generate about that same amount of money over 15 years, sir.
Okay, very good. And as the mayor pointed out, this is a complicated economic development project. And I think some of the misinformation and misunderstandings going around is that a lot of these things are all one project. And in fact, it's not. It's really almost five different pieces that were put together here. And I break those down by Festival Park Plaza. We break it down by the Prince Charles Hotel and residence now. We break this down by the stadium, and we break this down by the parking deck that the city is having built for free for us. That is a public city parking deck, as Councilwoman Waddell pointed out, that is already generating revenue. And on top of that, we will have then a hotel and business park essentially going in above that. Is that correct? So there's five different projects, and all these impacted each other in some way. So into that, the, is it correct to say that the stadium, when we looked at that and changed the footprint of the stadium on that project, that impacted the parking deck project?
Absolutely. When we initially started having these conversations about redevelopment of the Prince Charles Hotel, there was no stadium in that conversation. And we talked about including parking as part of the city's support infrastructure to make the development happen. But when we put in the stadium, and especially a stadium with the features that we've designed in this one, and they're very unique and very powerful for our community, they also take up a lot of room. And that crowded out a lot of square footage on the ground, and kind of moved these investments off of that ground and into the air. And that's what we've been able to do, is keep those assets into the project. But the cost has gone up for those projects, but also, we hope, the value, because now we have class A office space overlooking a stadium, which should be very attractive. In fact, has turned out to be very attractive.
And so that choice to make those hard decisions on that stadium at that time, with the vision that the council had, to give what we all see now as a world-class stadium, really, forced a smaller footprint of this parking deck project, which is the foundation support, literally, for the class A business park as well as hotel. And in doing that, that had to increase the amount of concrete because of not only the transfer plate, but the footings underneath that. Is that where some of these costs are coming from?
Absolutely. I mean, we're basically building the foundation for what will now be a 12-story building.
And this was not a part of the Prince Charles Group, PCH, that they incurred this. This was something that they had to deal with because of these other projects, independent of the parking deck and the office space going in, that they had to contend with. Does that make sense?
Certainly, the project changed dramatically with the design of the stadium.
Okay. And as we see with the stadium, we have estimated economic impacts. We had an estimated economic impact of almost 1,200 jobs and $139 million coming into this economy during the construction phases of these projects. And then over 1,000 jobs that are going to be created, $126 million coming in in economic impact upon completion of that. And these are estimates, like we estimated the stadium's impact. And what we've seen already is that the stadium itself has exceeded our expectations already in terms of economic impact and participation of folks going to the games. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And lastly, this parking deck is going to be five stories?
Yes.
And on top of that is another seven stories going?
That's correct.
Which is going to be, by far, the largest building in Fayetteville.
I think, a little bit of debate, but I think that it is going to be the tallest, yes.
Tallest building. Okay. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cullerton. Councilman Wright?
Yes, Mr. Bauer. Page number three, dealing with the issues and analysis, the purpose amendments to provide an agreement addressed, addresses the following issues. And that last issue, right after the 37 million to 45 million, and it talked about addressing liquidated damages and other items. Can you talk about the liquidated damages and other items for us to kind of, for the listeners and for us to understand exactly what that is?
Sure. Actually, in our discussion of a previous item on tonight's agenda, I mentioned that we had put in place liquidated damages between ourselves and the Houston Astros for the construction of that building. We did the same thing here, in that we put in place liquidated damages of $1,000 per day for failure to complete on time. And we required that that same clause be put into the contract between the developer and their construction company. So we don't have a direct line to the construction company for liquidated damages. That line goes through the development company. So what we've done here is we've reached an agreement to have that clause be assigned to the city, so that if there are liquidated damages, or to the extent there are liquidated damages assessed, in this case because the project has been delayed, then those would come to benefit and reduce the contribution from the city to the project.
Okay.
Other items, we also discussed some of the timing pieces, you know, the established, you know, sort of when it'll start, and some other information about the timing and the composition of the project.
Okay, thank you. So this last paragraph is reading the last clause agreements to funding the stadium, Franklin Street Parking Deck, to estimate, to provide 1.6 million additional tax funds for the, over the next 15 years. This tax revenue will be coming from the actual parking of, in the garages combined? Can you explain that?
No, actually, the tax revenue will come off of the private development that's being supported by the parking deck and other investments in the area. So that's that change in minimum assessed value we talked about going from 35 to 47.
Gotcha. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilman Art?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bauer, how much was it going to cost the city of Fayetteville to raise the Prince Charles Hotel, to tear it down?
It's been a long time since we've had that conversation, sir, but it was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, if I remember correctly.
But we had that conversation.
We certainly did.
It was going to cost a significant amount of money. I think it was almost around $700,000. And then we had the transportation cost of getting all the debris off the site. It was a significant expense. And because nothing was happening with that building, and people were walking down the sidewalks of our city, having to watch their heads for falling scaffolding off the building, it was a serious contemplation. So I would say it's probably a significant investment that we've made that's made a tremendous turn in our downtown. Is that a fair statement?
It's very different today, sir.
Because we would have gone, we would have gone, we would have gone over $700,000 and tearing a building down with no prospects for what was going there, to what we currently have, which is the renovation of the Prince Charles Hotel, and the new building of the new office plaza and Hyatt Hotel on top of the parking deck. So significant investment is bringing a significant return on our investment. Also, this opportunity created the ability for the city to sell the Festival Park Plaza. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
And if you remember, that was an albatross around our neck, a piece of property we should have never bought, but we bought, got stuck with it. And because of putting this business deal together, we were able to take that off the taxpayers' bill and sell that building. And now they've got a great plan for that. And I think the other piece is, we can say now, one of our strategic goals has been to create a vibrant, you know, city, a place for young families, for businesses to come. And I think we could say this investment has really turned a stagnant situation downtown into meeting our strategic goal. Would that be a fair assessment?
Yes, sir.
So with that said, I'm in favor of supporting this proposal. We need to get this parking deck built, and we need to get this economic development in place, and we need to continue all the good things that are going down here. And we need to capitalize on that by changing the zoning and further developing in a vertical sense our downtown, because that's where we get our best return on tax dollars from an infrastructure standpoint. Is that correct, Mr. Bauer?
Yeah, actually, you just recently completed a downtown plan, and that was certainly the opinion of that planning study, that downtown has the density and the ability to add value. And certainly, if you look throughout the community, to where is your highest value per square foot, those buildings are in the downtown.
Yeah. So this investment is going to spur those further investments, maybe even the sale of this building for some new construction here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All right, council, so we have thoroughly discussed this. But just before I'll go to Councilman Dawkins for a motion, can you put back on the screen the amount of jobs, the economic impact slide? So 1,182 jobs during construction, 1,000 jobs after. Many of you remember, maybe two years ago, we had an opportunity in this community to get Sanderson Farms, which said they were going to get 1,000 jobs. And it was very controversial. And what we heard was that we deserved better than that from some people. These are professional office jobs that are offering 1,000 jobs. And I can't remember exactly what the figure was, what we were going to grant back to Sanderson Farms for the type of jobs that they were offering. But it was far more than a million dollars, I'm sure. It seemed like over a 10-year period, it may have been, you know, roughly 7, 8 million. But this is an opportunity to bring professional office-type jobs. And I was reading some of the service industries that may be involved that said, you know, anything from a office of physicians, insurance, real estate offices, you know, restaurateurs and so forth. And so with that counsel, this is an opportunity to make an investment into putting people to work in the community. So Councilman Dawkins, look to you for...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to make a motion, and then I will push my button again, because I do want to just ask Mr. Bauer a couple more questions. But I'd like to go ahead and get a motion going. Motion to authorize the city manager to execute the proposed amendment substantially in the form attached and adopt Budget Ordinance Amendment 2019-20 and Capitol Project Ordinance Amendment 2019-44 as presented.
That's a motion by Councilman Dawkins. There's a second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bauer, the, this additional money, because Councilman Chris said my name, and then he said the term misleading. I want to make sure there's no misleading going on. It's going from 38 million to 45 million on the taxable value, which is going to generate additional funds if this thing happens. Notice, I said the word "if." But the good news, I want to thank Mr. Bauer and Karen McDonald and the other attorneys. We've got liquidated damages in there. So if this doesn't happen, we've got liquidated damages. And then my last question, the Prince Charles Hotel, now apartments, that tax revenue from the city and the county is going to the Franklin Street Garage, is that correct?
It is.
So that, so this, there'll be additional money, because as the mayor pointed out, there's some additional values added to the apartment, the new Prince Charles, what do you call it, the gathering, I think it's called? Yeah, he's nodding his head. Okay, so that's... Okay, so that's, that's going to help us pay off that Franklin Street Garage parking deck. And lastly, I want the public to understand, we're not going to cash flow on this parking deck. We're not, this parking deck's never going to cash flow. Parking decks across America rarely cash flow. So I want to thank you for supporting us as we're trying to spend money to make money that will add a quality of life that this city has never seen in my 60 years being born up the hill there. That's my discussion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilman Chris?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I want to stay on the good side of Councilmember Dawkins. What he said was, and this is a quote, "We're going from 38 to 45 million." What he did not clarify was we were talking about the assessed value of the properties in regards to have to lower him taxes. And I wanted the public to understand that we're not spending 38 million, nor are we spending 45 million. But when the projects are finished, if the minimum value is $37 million, Prince Charles Holding has guaranteed us that they will pay the difference as if the property is valued at 45 million. That's a win-win for the city again. Thank you, sir.
All right. So with that being said, council, I'll look to you for your votes to approve the motion. All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those present. Motion carries. All right. I think that was all of the consent. Item 7.01, the reports from the Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission Annual Report. Would like to say, I know we have a public forum that is coming up, so we've got several speakers on the public forum. Typically, as he's getting this ready, I just want to kind of, and I will read this disclosure again. Typically, we set aside 30 minutes, but I try to be as accommodating as possible for the speakers that are speaking to make sure everyone is heard. But also, it should be noted that, that tonight's agenda did not have anything pertaining to specific items, but we're all ears tonight. So we'll be to you, we'll get to you soon as we complete these items. Gavin, are you present?
Uh, no, sir. Getting things ready.
Yes, sir.
Um, we had, I think, 6.07 as well still to do.
Oh, did we miss that?
Yeah.
Another item that I pulled, I'm sorry. Yeah, so 6.07, Mr. Bauer, this was, oh, Ms. Blot?
We pulled it.
Yeah, we pulled it. So we got to vote on it separate. Yeah. So, Ms. Blot, this item asked you to pull, this is a new program from the state for our Hurricane Florence...
That's correct. It's actually for Hurricane Matthew. The state rolled it out in March of this year, and the acronym is SARF, State Acquisition Relocation Fund. So for those individuals whose homes have been acquired through Mathews, through CBGDR or HMGP, this is an extra allocation to fill that gap because they were given market value pre-storm, but the cost of a home today is significantly more. So they will be getting up to $50,000 additional money for the down payment or relocation. There's also an additional $5,000 for actual moving expenses. So it's a new program to bridge that gap.
And how do they go about applying for?
Once it's approved, then we can start sending out the packets for those who have already received acquisition dollars to apply. It's a case-by-case.
Matthew-related?
This is still Matthew-related.
Okay. Any word on Florence?
Florence? No, we know that the allocation has come down from the government. Right now, it's at the state level, so we're keeping our fingers crossed.
All right. Uh, Councilman Wright?
For clarification, those people that participated in the buyback that has already received some funds for their homes, you're saying that this is an additional to what they've already received to help them to transition? And this is also the $5,000 for, what's the five?
So $5,000 is for actual moving expenses?
Right, the moving expenses.
The $50,000 is to bridge that gap between what they were given for acquisition of their home and what it's actually going to cost to purchase a new home. So we'll be guiding them through the process. It's a case-by-case basis, and we'll be step-by-stepping all of the recipients.
All right, great. That's awesome. And I'll be getting back with you. Maybe your staff can come out to those hard-hit areas and kind of break that down to them and see if they have...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Blot, after approval, just to make sure I'm clear, when will the word start going out to the citizens? You will mail something specifically to those buyout persons, but would there be any other means to get the word out to, because if they've moved or been relocated or displaced, they can't get the mail, right?
So we know their, their current addresses because we've recently settled on the, the actual sales of the homes. So the only way that we can really communicate with them is we have the list of those who have been approved for acquisition for both CBGDR Hazard Mitigation, HMGP Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. So that between those two, this pot of money will meet that need.
All right. Well, I just wanted to explain, so thank you.
No, thank you.
All right. So, Councilman Wright, is that a motion to...
Uh, yes, sir. Ms. Mayor, make a motion to receive 6.07 Adoption of Special Revenue Fund Project Ordinance 2019-12 for the State Acquisition Relocation Fund SARF Grant Program.
All right. As a motion by Councilmember Wright, as a second by Councilmember Hare, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember, what else? Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. All right, now we're, item 7.01, Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission Annual Report. Ms. Blot, back again.
Thank you, Mayor, and the members of council. Tonight, we have the Chair of the Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission, Mr. Lee Johnson. Annually, the Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission gives a presentation about the CBG programs that they help the city administer. They are the community participation component of CBG, which is a requirement of HUD. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Lee Johnson. I'd first like the other members of the FRC to stand who are here, as well as staff who helps out significantly with the FRC presentation. And at this time, I'll hand it over to Mr. Johnson.
Again, my name is Lee Johnson, Jr. I'm a recently elected Chair of the Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission here tonight to present the annual report. I'll be pretty brief. For those who may not be as familiar with the commission, there are four main responsibilities of the Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission. First, the planning and implementation of the HUD and Economic, Economic Community Development Programs. Those are programs that you guys are well aware of for the most part. Housing Rehabilitation Program, Targeted Revitalization Program, Emergency Housing Repair. These are, these are programs that are funded by this, by this commission and by the council. Second, the, the commission recommends projects and programs to the city, including these types of programs that I just mentioned. Third, the commission works with the Economic and Community Development Department in developing, in, in recommending and implementing these programs. Fourth, the commission advises the council as to economic and community development The mission of the commission and the, and the Economic Community Development Department is to provide quality service and opportunities to the citizens in need of decent, safe, and affordable housing, creating positive economic development situations resulting in job opportunities for low-to-moderate-income persons and expansion of the tax base. This mission is reflected in the three main goals of the Fayetteville Development Commission. First, decent and affordable housing, to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing to improve the quality of lives, households, neighborhoods, and community stability. Second, suitable living environment, create environments that promote neighborhood improvement, eliminate slum and blight, increase accessibility, and support the homeless. And the third goal, specific goal, is economic opportunities, to create community investment programs designed to support entrepreneurship, economic empowerment, retention of businesses, and job creation opportunities. So the reason I'm here tonight is to talk about some of the accomplishments of this past year with regard to the Development Commission. And I'll break this down, or the staff has broken this down into five main categories. First, under decent, affordable housing, under single-family developments, the first one listed there is the Oak Ridge Estates. Obviously, we had a huge event in the fall, and there's a lot of excitement around, around the Oak Ridge, looking to provide 47 affordable, single-family houses to the community. B Street Revitalization is another big project. That's building to serve seven affordable, single-family houses to the community. Under the multi-family development side, West Fayetteville Apartments, Hoak Loop Commons, MacArthur Park Apartments Two, West Cumberland Apartments. These are projects that are funded under the recommendations of this commission. And when you look at the total, we're looking at adding over 300 affordable housing units to the community, which is great. Under the community development and housing, there has been a ton, a ton of accomplishments under this, under this section. Owner occupancy rehabilitation, rehabilitation program, six homeowners assisted with full rehab projects. You can see the other programs, emergency housing repair, nine homeowners were assisted, 70 additional homeowners are on the waiting list. The emergency housing repair, the NEMI project, 34 homeowners assisted. The target area revitalization program, two applicants assisted with, with exterior facades, facades. Essential Single Family Rehabilitation Disaster Recovery Program, three homeowners assisted affected by the Hurricane Matthew and/or Florence. The acquisition, acquisition and develop, excuse me, and demolition program. One property was demolished, 16 awarded to contractors pending demolition completion and three denied. Program removes slum and blight from the city has been a very effective program in, in developing the city and removing some of the blight. Water and Sewer Assessment Assistance Program, 44 homeowners were approved. There are another 22 on the, on the waiting list. The, the Home Buyer Education Workshop, 67 total attendees to date. So as you can see, the staff has done a great job in, in really identifying needs and getting the word out to the community so that they can take advantage of these programs. And obviously, there's, there's, there's more to be done here. We need to provide the program to all these people that are on a waiting list for some of these, some of these key features. Here's some photos of the, the Oak Ridge Estates subdivision infrastructure installation. You can see that the infrastructure is going into place. West Fayetteville Apartments. And here's a few photos from some of the programs, the before and afters from the Housing Rehabilitation Program, the Home Buyer Education Workshop on the bottom left, the before and after, some of the B, B Street Revitalization, and photos of the Acquisition and Demolition Program. Under the Suitable Living Environment, the commission provides funding and support for several nonprofit and, and other programs mainly to help, help the homeless. As you can see, there's been several, there's several items listed here. Under the Endeavors, serviced eight adults, 24 children, three families are now in permanent housing. The Salvation Army has served 27,585 meals, including, which also includes support of the white flag operations. Under the TruVine Hope Center, serviced 125 single homeless females, participate also in the, in the white flag operations. And the Homeless Client Assistance Program, 267 unsheltered homeless assistance, bus passes, family reunification programs were implemented. Additionally, we have veterans empowering veterans. See some photographs there from four rehabilitated homes. Also provided transportation, or transitional housing for homeless veterans and their family. Also, under the Suitable Living Environment, it's the Beautification Program. You can see an example of, of progress at the Inglewood subdivision. Under Economic Opportunities, this is support of local small businesses, a lot of these programs. Total of 28 small businesses received loans or matching grants thus far. Business Assistance Loan Program, $90,000 in gap loan to, to purchase a building. Small Business Development Grant Program, there were five matching grants totaling $23,238. Under the Commercial Exterior Improvement Grant Program, 17 matching grants totaling Under the Small Retention, or Small Business Retention Grant Program, five matching grants totaling $14,818, $18, leveraging $35,884. Under these, under the Economic Opportunities, a total of six jobs were created and 114 jobs Under Economic Development, Job Skills Training Program provided 26 sponsorship grants for tuition, books, et cetera, for low and moderate income FTCC students. The Neighborhood Resource Centers, which are a valuable resource, provided classes including, but not limited to, computer, financial literacy, GED, and life skills. We partnered with the FTCC and the Center for Economic Empowerment and Development to offer technical assistance to small businesses, nonprofits. 482 clients served, with 55% of those clients being low in income, low to moderate income. 646 people attended 78 workshops. 22 small business clients have received assistance with access to capital, resulting in 31 jobs being created and 18 retained by the small business clients. Some photos of some before and after pictures of the, this is under the Commercial Exterior Improvement Grant. Also, the Commercial Exterior Improvement Grant. And finally, the, the Community Voices Program. This is, this is an initiative for grassroots leaders to become more effective by enhancing their skills. A community initiative interest meeting was held, citizens to, to gauge viability and interest. 16 residents expressed interest and encouragement for the initiative. Training for co-faciliters was completed. There is a, there's a community-wide kickoff scheduled for August the 20th. So those were some of the accomplishments through the Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission this past year. In my time with the commission, this has been one of the more productive years. The staff has done an amazing job. Cynthia Blot has come in and provided a new energy and, and a new perspective. It's been great. So we are seeing some results, and, and we look forward to the report next year. And that'll conclude my report.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hare?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad to hear the, hear and see and read some of the great success, successes of our economic development folk. Always good to hear what we're doing to improve the lives of others, to include our homeless and our first-time home buyers. Explain to me just what type of program or learning that takes place for our first-time home buyers' education program? What kind of things do they, do they learn?
Uh, those programs, Cynthia, would you like to speak to the specifics of the program?
Sure. It's a, it's a comprehensive program for those that are seeking homeownership responsibly. We do not teach the program. It is currently taught by Fayetteville Urban Ministries, correct? Oh, sorry, Kingdom CDC is now teaching first-time home buyers. It's, it's just very comprehensive. It's, it's just very comprehensive. It's on a case-by-case. Everyone's situation with homeownership is different. So it just takes them through the process and all the responsibilities associated with homeownership, insurance, this cost, et cetera, upkeep. And we fund, we fund a small portion of that.
Okay. Whenever, and you say it's a case-by-case, so whenever a family or whomever it is that enrolls in a program, once they go through it, because I know just myself being a homeowner, sometimes it's always, it's always good to have a refresh of things that's going on out of all the years of, of owning a home. Do they come back? Is it an opportunity where, once they go through the program, it's over? Or do, is it refreshing from the community?
They are always welcome to go back. Kingdom CDC does a good job keeping track of their students.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, it's, sir. Councilman Wright.
Yes, sir. Blot, and one of our goals, it says Suitable Living Environment, creating environments that promote neighborhood improvement. Eliminate slum and blight, increasing accessibility and supporting the homeless. That last item is supporting the homeless. Can you kind of talk about some of the things that make aware that educate the community as far as what we're doing with, with the homeless?
I'm, I'm actually gonna let Adolf Thomas come up and answer that question. He is the, a member of the COC and works with a number of entities, I think can give you a better perspective on that.
Good evening, council. Sir, as far as, as far as homeless is, is our support. Of course, the city of Fayetteville is not necessarily the lead on homelessness because the county, who receives the Emergency Shelter Grant, which is about eight hundred thousand dollars a year, uses that money to help our main shelters operating such as Salvation Army and Cumberland Interfaith. And of course, our homeless, home prevention and rapid rehousing programs. On our hand, with CDBG funds, we can only use a small portion of that. We're not allowed to use whatever we want. So they, they dictate what we can serve, which is about fifteen percent of public service. And in that, we do all the programs we just saw. And so we'll get RFPs, we put out a RFP every year around December. And we ask the nonprofits who are doing projects that serve the homeless to submit those submissions to us. And we'll go through that, knowing what the council's goals are and our redevelopment commission. We choose projects that we help to serve, such as, you know, maybe food, but then again, now we're looking at homeless first models and those kind of things, which are probably where we're going to be going in the future. And so that's how we choose what the city does when it comes to supporting the homeless. So that's also in, in, in tracking with what the COC's agenda is. Because we want to work alongside them, not, you know, opposite them. So when those goals are set and then we get our, our portion of our block grant, which is not ESG, we use our little portion, do as much as we can to help those ESG programs continue.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Councilman Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Johnson, I had a couple of things for you. And I want to also thank Cynthia, Adolf, they're keepers, Mr. Mayor. I tell you, they're hard workers, your board. Thank you especially. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You returned, you, you, you went off to college, but then you lived in Charlotte maybe for a while. And then the, the point I want to make is you returned when to Fayetteville?
I returned about six years ago.
About six years ago?
Yes, sir.
So this, this fellow and, and many others like him have come back. These, these are young people, our children, because I used to play basketball against his dad and his mama sells Fayetteville. We're thinking about both your sisters, but especially the one who's going through a challenging medical condition. And a lot of folks are praying for you. But, but these young people, that's why we've got hope here in Fayetteville. And this new millennial commission is going to do exciting things. But I wanted to personally thank you. It's nice to see you again. You're all grown up and...
Way to go, Jay. Way to go, baby.
Thank you, Mr. Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you for your thoughts.
And tell your dad I'm ready to take him on again in the basketball.
I'll tell him.
It'll be a quick one. Give him ten points.
All right. All right, council. Thank you, sir. Uh, council, we need a, we need a motion to receive the report from...
So move, sir.
It's a motion by Councilmember Hare, second by Councilmember Dawkins. Any further discussion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes.
Good report, sir.
And we are joined by phone by Councilmember Jensen. As of eight-twenty, Ms. Councilmember Jensen, you with us?
I am.
All right. Well, welcome. So we're voting to receive the report. What's your pleasure?
Green.
All right. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous, including Councilmember Jensen, joins us by phone. All right. Item seven point zero-two, the Firefighters Relief Fund Annual Report.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak tonight on behalf of the Firefighters Relief Fund Board. I'm Captain Tommy Warren. I'm assigned to Station Five on Boone Trail. And I'm also a member of the Relief Fund Board. Excuse me. I'll give you a quick background on the Relief Fund Board. The Relief Fund, the Relief Fund Board was enacted into law, law by legislation in nineteen oh-seven. Its initial purpose was to financially assist firefighters who may have been injured while rendering service to our community. It is funded by a percentage tax paid on property insurance premiums. In nineteen eighty-four, the General Assembly amended the statute to allow the additional expenditures of the local funds. These funds can be, this fund can provide educational benefits to firefighters and their dependents otherwise qualify, who otherwise qualify from benefits from the relief fund. As well as provide assistance to destitute firefighters who served honorably for at least five years. The hardship cannot be from fault of poor investment or unwillingness to work. Such provisions have include, but are not limited to assistance with housing, vehicle or commuting expense, food, clothing, utilities, medical care and funeral expenses. The City of Fayetteville Fire Department, as well as other fire departments within North Carolina, must meet the annual requirement in order to become eligible to receive these funds. The, the requirements are as follows. The fire department must be rated as a member of the North Carolina State Firefighters Association. The department must submit a financial report of the local firefighters relief fund's receipts, disbursements and remaining, remaining balance to the State Firefighters Association. All of this must take place before October thirty-first of every year. The Firefighters Relief Fund Board of Trustees is comprised of five people. Two elected by the fire department, two elected by the city governor and body, and one appointed by the insurance commissioner. The board chair is retired fire chief Benny Nichols, who was appointed by the insurance commissioner. Vice chairman is Captain Justin Nobles, who was elected by the fire department. The treasurer is the chief financial officer for the city, who was appointed by council. And the other two members are retired battalion chief Calvin Bishop and myself. Chief Hill serves as the ex officio of the board and assists in efforts of the board. He's very knowledgeable with the procedures of the board and is great help when questions arise. Deputy Chief Sifford is also active in supporting our meetings. Ms. Bobby Bethay acts as the secretary. Thank you for the opportunity to give you a quick update and overview of our committee.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions for Captain? All right, council, I need a motion to receive the report.
So be it, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, there's a motion by Councilmember Wright, I think a second by Councilmember Waddell. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes.
Green.
All right. Rain across the board, Madam Clerk. That's unanimous, including Councilmember Jensen. Item eight point zero-one, Hurricane funding update, status of Hurricane Matthew and Florence-related projects. Mr. Toll, you come to tell us about the money?
Yes, sir.
How much we have not received yet?
I want some, sir. My people need it.
From the state. All right. Thank you, Mayor, council. We're gonna kind of break this out into two parts. I'm gonna cover the public assistance, which talks about the big infrastructure to rebuild the city. Then Ms. Blot will come talk about HMGP and CD, CTGR. So to start with this, I'm gonna look at the projects for Hurricane Matthew and Florence, and then we'll look at the cash flow. So for Hurricane Matthew, there was a total of thirty-seven projects. We have completed twenty-five of those projects. The total budget for the thirty-seven was, for the thirty-seven projects was twenty-one million. Ongoing, we have twelve projects ongoing. For Hurricane Florence, there's twenty-five projects identified. And we're still going back and forth with FEMA about the scopes and if they're gonna be approved or not. And the total budget as of now is looking at about nine point six million. So then if you look at the cash flow, so far the city has spent on Hurricane Matthew ten point one million. We've been, the city's been reimbursed five point two million. And then there's ten million that has still been unspent attributed to those twelve projects that are ongoing. Then for Hurricane Florence, the city has currently spent three point nine million, zero of which has been reimbursed. And we have about five point seven million looking to be, that is currently unspent. And then in your handout, in your packet, you have a detailed line-by-line explanation of every project identified by hurricane. Any questions or, before I turn?
Oh, yeah, sir. So just to make sure I'm clear. About twenty million dollars between ten being spent for Matthew and ten that needs to be spent, but we've received five.
That's correct.
Okay. And for Florence, we have roughly nine point five, nine point six million in projects that have been either spent or identified that need to be spent, and we've received zero.
We've only, we've spent three point nine on Florence. Most of that is the debris removal. The total is gonna be nine point six, so we have about five point seven left to spend if those projects are approved.
And how much of that have we received?
None. But we've just, we've just submitted the reimbursement within the last several weeks for the debris removal.
Okay. What took so long to get our paperwork in?
It's just a matter, we, what we do internally is we work with FEMA. There's a new process with Florence where there's an online portal. So it's just going back and forth with them, making sure everything was ready so that when we submit it, there will, there'll be no questions to come back to us.
Okay. All right. Councilman Art.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you go back to your slide where it had to break down, please? There you go. So out of the ten point one for Matthew, we've been reimbursed four, five point two, which means we got four point nine outstanding. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. When do we anticipate we'll get that four point nine million?
Well, we're still, we're working with FEMA on that. The, the interesting thing with this is, so there'll be, there's an initial estimate that's, that's given per project. So let's just say it's a million dollars. And then so as you go throughout the project, you submit updates and FEMA will reimburse for those updates. Now, for some reason, the project goes to two million dollars, and that's okay with FEMA as long as the scope stays the same. But they're only gonna reimburse up to seventy-five percent of that original project budget, which is, for this case, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Then they'll come back and reimburse the rest of it at the, at the project closeout. So in some of the projects where the scope stayed the same, but the budget grew, that's where a lot of this opportunity is for this reimbursement, where they won't come back and reimburse the city till the project is a hundred percent done and they've done their complete checklist.
You know, I gotta, I gotta say this for the public, Mr. Mayor. This is criminal in the way that our federal government and our state are being so unresponsive to the needs at the local level. And I hope every one of them in Washington or Raleigh hear what I just said. How long ago was Matthew?
Years.
I mean, that's ridiculous. And, and we try to do everything we can to get our paperwork done. And you mentioned portal. A portal is supposed to be an electronic way to do a submission, right?
Yes, sir.
Right.
But that's for Florence. If it's still Matthew, we still do it the old way.
Listen, we're doing it the old way even with the new way. Because somebody's got a stubby pencil and they're counting tick marks, and that's why it's taking so long to get the money back. It, it's ridiculous. And I want to encourage everybody listening tonight, write your congressman, write your house representative and your state senate representative and tell them this is unacceptable. Because my fear is, we're gonna have another hurricane event. I mean, we're in hurricane season right now. And looking at the rain we just had this past weekend, we could end up with another situation in, in the next sixty days. And we can't even get reimbursed for what, I mean, three point nine million dollars was about the cost just to clean everything up. Is that what you said?
Yeah, it was a little bit over three, and then we had eight hundred thousand dollars for the, the readiness of the, the first responders and things of that nature.
Yeah, that's running our, our emergency operating, operations center and all that stuff. And I tip of the cap to all our first responders on how well they do in those situations, so we thank them. But, but I'm concerned, and I also want to ask, out of this, where, where is the funding for the, for the dam reimbursement? For the Mirror Lake Dam and the Devonwood Dam reimbursement?
It's in, it's in here, the, it's in the Matthew.
So we're still waiting for the Matthew money to include repairs to dams that we need to make? Mr. Toll, you're a nice guy. I'm not trying to take it out on you, but I'm not happy. I'm not happy, and I hope nobody's happy. And I, I think I'm gonna go home tonight and write some letters. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Toll. Where does this money come from that, that we spend? Do we pull it out of our general fund or is it part of the risk management, the twenty million or so we had in there, I guess?
Well, to keep it kind of simplistic, we budget for the revenue to come in. So it's kind of a wash, but we're using our cash. So if you remember, whenever we look at fund balance, you have restricted fund balance and unrestricted fund balance. So this number, even though it's kind of budgeted almost at a wash, you have to restrict it within our fund balance, which lessens your flexibility until the actual reimbursement is given. I hope that...
Well, but I just, I wanted to know, it's not the general fund, but we have a risk management fund, which is maybe twenty million, or it was twenty million?
Yeah, but the, the money's not necessary, we might be, let's say, borrowing the cash from there to pay these bills.
That's, that's what I'm, I'm trying to figure out where the cash is. We're not borrowing this money from the bank. We're not paying interest on it.
No, no.
This is money that the taxpayers paid in.
Right. I would say.
We just got it in a fund, like an insurance fund, a risk management fund.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hare.
Thanks, Mayor. Jay.
Yes, sir.
Your Hurricane Matthew, unspent ten million. Florence, you're unspent five point seven. All of the projects or the, the helps that we gave, those that have not received helps with this remaining funding that's left, how does that work?
These funds here are for the projects, like roads, dams, culverts, things of that nature. So...
None of this goes, none of this particular funding goes for our residential help?
Not the part that I'm speaking with, sir.
Okay. Is that what we're getting ready to hear?
Yes, sir.
All right, then I'll save my question for then. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Chris?
I'm not so greatly concerned about the lack of reimbursement as I am concerned about getting these projects done. That's the part that bothers me. Mr. Moore's got a street out there that's still closed for Matthews over two years. Mr. Art put it front and center. The system is broken. And the system is vengeful to citizens of this state and nation and this city. We suffer. We are suffering because of the bureaucracy. How do we fix it? He said it. All of us have got to speak up. If you don't say anything, everybody has a perfect right to believe that you're satisfied and the last biscuits is to stay in the center of the dining room table. I'm talking to the public tonight, okay? If you're not satisfied, it doesn't matter whether it's your street that was not flooded. We have to collectively voice our displeasure at what's happening to us here in Fayetteville. You have to call your representative. They got local offices here in Fayetteville. City clerk can give you that info. We have to talk to our senators, tell us and all. We have to let them know we're not happy with this. And it's not just the people that are suffering, the people that were flooded out of their homes. Are we concerned about those that had damaged homes that can't live in them? If we are concerned, we have to speak out and help rectify this situation. If we are concerned, we have to speak out and help rectify this situation. All of us have a state, what was, somebody said something about the least of us, and you, you know where I'm coming from, Reverend, okay? We're in this together. I don't sleep well at night knowing that there are citizens out there that were flooded out of their homes, just like I don't sleep well at night knowing that we got homeless people out there sleeping on the sidewalks in the rain. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and before I go to Councilman Wright, just procedurally so that the public understands, what you're talking about is replacing roads and public infrastructure. We haven't even-
Haven't even-
-heard the presentation about people impacted. So the federal government pays this money to the state government, who is supposed to release it to us.
Correct. For the part I'm speaking of, yeah, so it's seventy-five federal, twenty-five state. The money goes to the state and then the state releases-
And I'm sure that those local priorities that we sent up to our legislators in Raleigh included a lot of these infrastructure plans and, and, and a check-in on when they were gonna send us reimbursement. So, agreed that all of us work for you all, so we could certainly use your help calling Raleigh and, and- I think it may have already been released from the federal government, or a good portion of it. So Raleigh's got our, got our situation held up. Uh, Councilman Wright?
Uh, yes, thank you, Jay, for the, the presentation. The question is, we have ten million unspent for Matthews as of now and five-point-seven unspent for Florence. And we know that Matthews has been two-and-a-half years ago, and, and we still have unspent money for that. And, and I concur with my fellow councilmen. It's a shame. I've had some of the hardest hit in District Seven, and I saw people suffer. And I saw them misplaced. I've had citizens even die waiting for the money. And it's really no excuse. The money, as the mayor said, was there from, from the federal level, but it sat at the state for almost two years. And I concur that we really need to make calls to our House representatives, senators and congressmen, because we've definitely been mistreated here in Fayetteville as far as our funding goes when it comes to these natural disasters. And I really hope that we can learn from the mistakes that we've made, that we won't repeat these mistakes because people are suffering. I felt good about when the money was released. We had several families in Hollywood Heights that was reimbursed with the, with the buyback program and seemed to be happy, and I was so happy to see them get that, those fundings, but it, it was so long coming. And so if we could learn from the, these mistakes and find out what held up this money for so long that these people suffered for so long because of these natural disasters, and so I concur. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilman Art, and then we, we still have Ms. Block, this-
It's very, very brief. And Mr. Toll, uh, when we, when we have a project like a road that's been washed out, and we've got the money in our general fund and we could go in and do the repair, what's the impact on reimbursement from the, the federal government on that?
Well, I think if I could take a step back for some clarity, we need to be on the same page as FEMA, so they have to agree on the scope. If we were just to go fix it without them, without us together, then there might not be any reimbursement. And that's what sometimes leads-
And that's, that's the point that I wanted to highlight to the general public. There, there are numerous situations where the city is prepared, both financially and from, you know, a planning and execution standpoint, to go out and repair these things, but we're penalized. If we do, we lose federal reimbursement from FEMA for making those repairs. Is that a correct statement?
If, if we're not hand in hand.
I'm not, not saying hand in hand. If we, if, if we go out and they approve the scope and we go ahead and do the work, do we get reimbursed?
Yes, if they approve the scope.
But, but how long does it take them to approve the scope?
And I mean, that's, that's, it's difficult to pinpoint each project.
They're, they're in lies answer, Mr. Manager, okay? Because we're ready to go and we've got engineers and we can make these repairs, but we can't get FEMA to sign off on the scope. And that's why I say we need our federal delegation to help us, okay? Because even if the money's in Raleigh, until FEMA says it's a go, we can't do the repairs and seek reimbursement. And the impact is, that's money that we could be using for other projects or we could be using for other hurricane repairs. But because we have to sit on it, because we can't get approval for reimbursement, we could get stuck with those bills. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Block?
I know, hello again. So I'm going to cover two programs that are a result of Hurricane Matthew, CDBG, DR and HMGP. HMGP is a hazard mitigation grant program that came directly from FEMA to the city. So it did not go through the county and the state, it came directly to us. So we were able to move on that one pretty quickly. We were awarded four-point-one million. The initial approvals from FEMA were for thirty-three homes, twenty-seven in acquisition, three in elevation and three in reconstruction. Many of the homeowner, well, many, a number of homeowners found solutions other ways or through other programs or they were part of CDBGDR. CDBGDR is an income-based program, HMGP was not. So there were, you know, two or three programs, including our own CDBG program that some homeowners took advantage of for quick recovery. Unfortunately, there were a number that, that didn't qualify for either, so they had to remain in the HMGP program. So at this point, there are twenty that ha- that remain in HMGP. Sixteen elevation, three acquisitions and one reconstruction. We have completed fifteen of the sixteen acquisition projects and homeowners have received funds for those projects. There's one remaining that has some issues that we're trying to finalize, but we should have funding to that final acquisition very soon. The other three programs, two of them have requested to be moved from reconstruction and elevation to acquisition. And part of that is just the fact that the houses would have to be elevated to such a height. It wasn't prudent, many were older and it, it just didn't make sense. So we have a little hold in there, but we're pretty sure we're gonna get a change from FEMA to allow those homeowners who wanted elevation to, to have acquisition. And these are the next steps, we're finishing the final steps in the reconstruction of one home. And that, of course, is, takes a bit longer. We have to get the contract bids, but that is actually in the works right now. So we're, and that program was a little different as well because the reconstruction was actually the reconstruction of a modular home and not the actual home. So the homeowner's still, still trying to decide if that's what they wanna do. We may actually ultimately acquire that property as well. So the next one was our CDBGDR program. This one, of course, went from the federal to the state, the state to the county and the county to us. Horn has been managing this program for us. We started with a total of two-hundred-and-eleven applicants. Again, this is Matthew only. At this point, we are in the process of a hundred-and-fourteen active applications. Let's see, is that thirteen have actually received money for the reconstruction? There's still work to do on CDBGDR acquisition, but it is moving. It's just not moving as quick as HMGP. And that is the residential portion.
All right, Council, any questions for, for Ms. Ms. Block?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question on the elevation. These, these homes that you're elevating, and help me to understand, Ms. Block, that is one more home, you said, that needed to be elevated?
No, in HMGP, the two who were in elevation have chose to go to acquisition. There's one reconstruction project who is still, the individual is trying to determine if they just wanna do acquisition because what FEMA is offering in the program is a modular home.
Okay, so that modular home, you stated that it'd probably be also bought back initially because of the-
The homeowner still has the option of choosing acquisition and for us to acquire the purchase of their home as it exists now, pre-storm value.
So why, why is it longer with the CBDG? You said, why, why does it take longer than the other program? Can you, is there a-
FEMA, FEMA gave the money directly to the municipalities, so we were able to act on it quickly.
Right.
CDBGDR is a federal program that went to the states and then to the counties. So there were multi-levels of approval and-
There you go. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Wada?
I just wanna make sure I understood what you were just saying. Am I understanding you to say that someone had a, a home, a stick-built home, and they were being offered a modular home as a replacement?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Why is that? Why wouldn't somebody be compensated with something equivalent to what they had before?
It was a cost analysis that FEMA determined, and that was the only option for the reconstruction.
But, but a modular home for your stick-built? Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Ms. Ms. Block, the program that you com- you presented to us earlier, SARF, is that it?
The SARF program, yes.
What, isn't that for gap funding? So if, if what they offered you is, is, is less, then there was some additional resources that made up for it, is that right?
Correct, and that is why acquisition is so much more appealing now.
So that makes sense for those people who, who turned to acquisition. Okay, all right. Yeah, we got, Sergeant Major's got a-
Yeah, Ms. Block, so let me understand. Uh, the House, they can replace the stick-built home with a modular home? And then the people can request a grant for the gap? In other words, the gap being the value of the mo- of the stick-built home versus the modular home?
No, if they choose-
And then they can take three, four, five years to get that gap money, right?
If they choose the modular home, that is their home. If they choose acquisition, then they can qualify for the SARF dollars to relocate. They would have to relocate the city.
So if they take the modular home, they can get in a home sooner. But if they go acquisition, oh, man, thank you.
All right, Council, so we, we'll need a motion to accept this report. We'll, we'll follow that with a five-minute brief break and then we'll come back for our public forum. We've got some folks that have been very patient tonight. So is a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, is a second by Council, Mayor Pro Tim Moan. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, look to you for your votes. Uh, Councilman Hare, was that your vote already?
Yes, sir, my, that was my vote.
Uh, Mr. Chris and Ms. Jensen?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. We'll take a five-minute break, see you in just a minute. Alright, well, we'll call our meeting back to order. Item, uh, let's get it, item nine point zeros, the public forum. This is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum not lasting any longer than thirty minutes, and each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the City Council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you are here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda under public hearing, ask that you reserve your comments until the public hearing. So when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you please come to the podium, clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, means you have thirty seconds left to speak. When you see the light turn to red, that means your time has, have expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we are unable to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Mayor, we have sixteen speakers signed up for this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Dolores Poindexter. Ms. Dolores Poindexter? Not present. Our second speaker is Mr. Lawrence Frauley. Mr. Lawrence Frauley? Not present. Mr. Bernard McCoy?
Bernard McCoy, one twenty, one, one two two zero Cullen Drive. Mr. Mayor, I'm here tonight, uh, with Community Voices. Uh, you were, I didn't know I was gonna have thirty minutes, so I'm gonna try to get through this as quickly as I can. Uh, but what I was trying to find, I'm sorry?
Oh, you said thirty minutes or three minutes?
No, I was told I was gonna have fifteen minutes, but I didn't, I didn't know I was gonna have three. But I just wanted to thank all of the people that led me to Community Voices. Uh, I am here, uh, tonight as a facilitator for the program. Community Voices is a citywide initiative directed by the City Council, directed to, by the Fayetteville Economic and Community Development Department, uh, under the direction of facilitators Dr. Michelle Ely and Kit Sanders of the North Carolina Cooperative Extension. I would like to introduce some of the members of our group here tonight. I'm not a political person at all. Uh, so I'm not representing any political party. I'm just a concerned citizen that wants to see our city move forward and make Fayetteville a better place to live and work. I have been doing business in Fayetteville since nineteen eighty-two. Uh, the difficulties, I'm familiar with the difficulties for facing small business. I am a veteran of U.S. Army and have, um, raised a family here. Uh, my issue is, for a community as diverse and educated and prosperous as Fayetteville, so many people, uh, that have no idea of what's going on in the government, where to go for resources to get things done. Most are like me, just complain about what Fayetteville does not do and go to Raleigh and Charlotte to enjoy their cities. After speaking with several community leaders, I decided to stop and come and actually get involved. Uh, under the leadership of Mr. Col- you, Mayor Coleman, I see that you have a council that is pro-business and willing to reach out to those in need. I believe the council, uh, is on the right road to progress. My concern is, how can we receive funding to help us? We're under community, uh, we're under the community development right now. Uh, and Dr. Ely is paid through them. How do we move forward with that? That was my question. Is that something I can come back and-
So typically, we, we don't respond during the public session, but we'll, we'll connect you with the manager to make sure that you can-
Okay, alright.
You can get a follow-up to that.
Alright, okay.
But, thank you. And Mr. Manager, can you have, uh, someone speak with him to, uh, answer the questions about that?
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Pam Carter. Ms. Pam Carter? Not present. Mr. Spencer Finley? Mr. Spencer Finley?
Good evening, citizens of Fayetteville and members of the council. The issue that I have come for you to address this evening is whether or not to write into law a proposal that would criminalize sleeping on the sidewalks in the city of Fayetteville. I am here tonight to tell all of you that this proposal is immoral, impractical, expensive, and unconstitutional. At the last city council meeting, the city attorney cited similar ordinances in other cities in North Carolina as evidence that this proposed ordinance is effective and legal. All or most of these cities, however, had homeless shelters that were government-run facilities. This is not true of Fayetteville. There are only a few shelters, and all shelters open to men have a Christian-based program. If this proposal is enacted into law, it will force homeless people, regardless of their religious beliefs, into shelters which require a declaration of Christian faith or which put the person through a religious program. This violates the First Amendment of the United States Constitution as requiring a homeless pers- people, regardless of their faith, into a Christian institution. In the case Martin versus the city of Boise, Idaho, the panel noted that although a 2014 amendment precluded the city from enforcing the ordinances when shelters were full, individuals could still be turned away for reasons other than shelter capacity, such as exceeding the shelter stay limit or for failing to take in, to take part in a shelter's mandatory religious programs. The court went on to state that a city cannot, via the threat of prosecution, coerce an individual to attend a religion-based treatment program consistently with the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment. The propos- the proposed ordinance is also in violation of the Eighth Amendment of the United States Constitution, as held most recently by Martin versus the city of Boise. The panel held that the cruel and unusual punishments clause of the Eighth Amendment precluded the enforcement of a statute prohibiting sleeping outside against homeless individuals with no access to alternative shelter. The panel held that as long as there is no option of sleeping indoors, the government cannot criminalize indigent homeless people for sleeping outdoors on public property on the false premise that they had a choice in the matter. Proponents of the ordinance have conceded there are not enough beds to cross every shelter in Fayetteville to house very conservatively estimated three hundred seventy-two unsheltered people in Fayetteville. What I wish to point out is that even if there were enough beds, most of the organizations serve too-specialized a group of people to help the vast majority of the unsheltered homeless population. Proposed with the ordinance is a fine not to exceed five hundred dollars. What would happen if an indigent person were fined five hundred dollars and they were unable to pay the fine? They would be sent to jail, crowding jails in Cumberland County, and costing the taxpayer more money than it would cost just to leave the person alone. The proposed ordinance does not fix any problems. It is unconstitutional, costly, and morally wrong. It is a beautification project at the expense of human beings. Thank you.
Mr. Daniel Finley? Mr. Daniel Finley?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, fellow citizens, my name is Daniel Finley, six thousand Lake Trail Drive. Um, I just wanted to address a few points from, uh, the last council meeting. Um, there's a lot of discussion about this, uh, criminalizing sleeping on the sidewalks. Uh, one of the points that was brought up is that there is, in fact, not enough, uh, beds for all the city's homeless, which is forcing private organizations and charities to deal with a public crisis. Um, the private infra- infrastructure that is in place is currently inadequate, and there is not enough beds to support the population of the homeless in the city. And as pointed out in the previous speaker, um, even if there were enough beds, there's an application and wait time associated with applying for that, and that assistance takes time. So even if the person were to meet all the criteria that was, uh, to be housed by that charity, um, a police officer couldn't go force that person off of city property into one of those shelters at that point in time, because there's lag time, and... Enforcing these, the proposed ordinance would equate to forcing homeless to participate in religious activities or instruction in exchange for shelter, which, as previously stated, would violate the First Amendment of the United States Constitution and was cited in, uh, Martin versus Boise. Um, this has been attempted in other cities in North Carolina, and the critical difference is that those other cities had shelters that the homeless could be directed to, and Fayetteville does not. Um, this has also been brought up in a case of, uh, Potager versus Miami. And if this, um, ordinance was challenged legally, I was wondering what it would cost the city of Fayetteville to have to defend against such a lawsuit. And then I was also wanting to bring up the fact, um, that if fines were issued not paid and there was jail time associated with, um, some of these individuals, what would be the cost in processing fees? What would be the cost in administrative fees? What would be the cost in jail time for these citizens that were affected? And what would it do to their chances of gaining meaningful employment on the flip side of that? It was also brought up that some people choose to be homeless. Um, not all people are the same, they're gonna require different types of care. And some of those who do not want assistance, I mean, we don't know what everyone's situation at home is. Somebody could say, "My mom's willing to take me in," but they could have an extremely volatile relationship that makes them not going home the only way that it is. And also, that could be a coping mechanism for them. If you say you have options, it's less mentally damaging to you than to admit that you really don't have an option. So we should not be, we should be not so quick to use this reasoning to apply to all those in need and absolve ourselves of any responsibility that we collectively have to care for those in need. And that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Ms. Lindsay Wofford?
Good evening. I'm Lindsay Wofford, fifty-seven twelve Icarus Court. I am the executive director at Seth Swish and a board member of our city's continuum of care. None of the people protesting last week, and no one in this room tonight, I'm sure, want people sleeping and living and suffering on the street. That's something we all can agree on. We are excited about the progress our city's made. We want businesses to thrive, and we want Fayetteville to be an amazing, safe, and beautiful place to live and work. But what we don't want and won't stand for is the criminalization of people that are most of the time just trying to survive. Studies play the co- place the cost of chronic homelessness to the public between thirty to fifty thousand dollars per person per year. Yet the cost of providing that person with housing and case managers is approximately ten thousand dollars per year. Because redirecting money to housing and services is proven to be the most effective solution to homelessness, the federal government has begun to make, to take numerous policy steps to discourage the criminalization of homelessness, including the Department of Justice filing a brief in Bell versus Boise stating that the DOJ's position that criminalization of homelessness is unconstitutional and a violation of homeless Americans' civil and human rights. It states, quote, "It should be uncontroversial that punishing conduct that is a universal and unavoidable consequence of being human violates the Eighth Amendment. Sleep is a life-sustaining activity. It must occur at some time in some place. If a person literally has nowhere else to go, then enforcement of anti-camping ordinance against that person criminalizes her for being homeless," end quote. On September fourth, two thousand eighteen, the Ninth Circuit Appellate Court agreed and stated, quote, "As long as there is no option of sleeping indoors, the government cannot criminalize homeless people for sleeping outdoors on public property on the false premise that they had a choice in the matter," end quote. Contrary to popular belief, not all people living on our city streets are drug-addicted, lazy, or drunk. Unfortunately, it is those struggling with those severe issues that catch our attention and get noticed. Many people keep quiet, trying not to draw attention to themselves. Many are employed, and many draw social security. Just this past Thursday at our center, we celebrated a woman getting a job at McDonald's. One man that visits our center every week gets just over two hundred dollars a month in social security and works cutting grass for local businesses and churches. How is he to come up with security deposits? First and last month's rent, utility deposits, and so on. He can barely afford to feed himself for a couple of weeks. Imagine now that he owes the city money because he's fined for sleeping. Thank you.
Ms. Melissa Visick?
Good evening, my name's Melissa Visick, I live at five twenty-seven Fox Lair Drive. So we've also heard this week that homelessness is a choice for some, that people are taking advantage of food and clothing services so that they can spend what little money they have on drugs, alcohol, and sex. But at the same time, studies have shown that children growing up in poverty in Fayetteville have among the worst outcome, outcomes in our nation. Cumberland County is identified in our state as a tier-one county, which means it's one of the worst. We have plenty of systemic problems in our community that don't need to be glossed over without, without-of-touch statements about homelessness being a choice or the horrors of life in wealthy, progressive west coast cities. For those struggling with addiction, we need to stop talking about them like they are our excuse not to help. They and everyone else struggling with homelessness are just as worthy of our help and kindness. Yesterday at the center, a lot of people expressed that they wanted their voices heard, but that they are hesitant to come forward. So in hopes of giving a voice to those actually in need, we conducted a short needs assessment. Eighty-five percent of them were males. Over fifteen percent are over the age of sixty-five. Twenty-two percent have children in their care. Forty-four percent are high school graduates, and twenty-two percent- Forty-four percent are high school graduates, and twenty-two percent are college graduates. Twenty-three have been in the foster care system. Seventeen percent are veterans. Forty-six spent last night on the streets, sidewalks, or in doorways. Over fifteen percent slept under a bridge or overpass. Fifteen percent slept in a camp. The remaining twenty-five percent spent the night with friends or family or in a shelter or in their car. Over half stated that they felt their safety was at risk last night. Fifty percent stated they are experiencing homelessness for the first time. Twenty-three percent have been homeless for less than a month, an identical number to those experiencing homelessness for three or more years. When asked what the major cause of their current homelessness, the largest percentage said illness and medical problems tied with domestic violence. This was closely followed by simply being stranded here, job loss, prison release, divorce, and addiction. Thank you.
Ms. Stacy Graybill?
My name is Stacy Graybill. I live at twenty-four oh nine Castle Bar Drive. I am the Managing Director at Seth Swish. To continue what Melissa was saying, forty-six percent have a permanent physical disability. Fifteen percent have received treatment for mental health. Sixty-one percent have other chronic health issues. Forty-six percent have been victims of violence while homeless, and thirty-three percent receive SSI. The growth of homelessness, especially visible homelessness, often leads to quick-fix criminalization policies that push the problem out of view but does nothing to solve the actual problem. It makes the problem worse. The enforcement of criminalizing ordinances creates a costly revolving door that circulates people from the street to the criminal justice system and back. It puts fines and arrest records in the way of getting jobs or housing and wastes resources that could otherwise be spent on housing and other services. Tonight and in the days moving forward, we are standing for those who don't have a voice and those who fear retaliation for voicing how they feel. To those who are struggling tonight, we are saying with or without funding, we will take you in to the best of our ability, and we will help you rebuild like you have helped us at the center. We will rebuild together as a family. We might not do it perfectly or in the way that anybody else wants, but we will do it. In closing, something to remember: We are not just discussing a city issue, not just discussing an ordinance. We are discussing people, living, breathing, feeling people, human beings, and we will not stand for an ordinance that is unconstitutional. Thank you.
Ms. Marsha Jones? Ms. Marsha Jones?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Marsha Jones. I proceed, I live at thirty ninety-five Enterprise Avenue. I'm afraid my conversation is about the transit. I fought this idea with transit for almost five years to get the bus back down on Enterprise Avenue because they just took it away. It's a slope, it's down the hill, and there's families down there. Well, it took a while, but we got it approved that the bus should come back down Enterprise Avenue. Well, there was a glitch in the matrix. Two of the stops came back, but one of them didn't. And at the time, I had been fighting for so long and so hard to get the buses back, I didn't even worry about it because the bus drivers were still letting us off at the stops, so I rode with it. Well, it seems that the bus says that they can't drop us off anymore there. Well, this is a problem. Houston, we have a problem. That stop that they took away is in the section of the quad that is where the elderly, disabled, handicapped, and elderly all live at. The stop that's after that is down a hill at the basin of the neighborhood street. Well, we can walk down to the bus stop, but when we come back with our bags and our, our handicap apothetuses and our wheelchairs and our walkers and all the things that we need, we got to come up a hill, which is one of the reasons why that's, that bus stop was at the top of that hill. Why it didn't come back when all the rest of them came back, I'd like to know. Why the bus won't let us off at the stop of the hill on the same street that was assigned to stop, I want to know. We're not asking for something new. We're not asking you to put a stop back in there that wasn't there. It was there. Why didn't it not come back? So when we ask to get off of the bus now at the stop where it used to be, they tell us, "No, they got to take us to an official stop," which means we have to walk up the hill. Sometimes the kids in the neighborhood help us carry our stuff up, sometimes, sometimes they don't. Well, this is what my fight is getting ready to be about this time. Put our stop back. It's ours. We deserve it. It's ours. Trying to see what color I am, but it's ours, and we deserve it, and we would like to see it come back. And I'm not through with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, is someone going to speak to her about, about that from transit?
Yes, sir. I believe she's also on our fact. She's on the transit forward. So we, we know. Yes. All right.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Willie Williams.
My name is Willie Williams. I'm on the property with Augusta Simpson. Two things. Number, all right, two things. They've been trying to solve this homeless, homeless problem. Now, I suggested a long time ago when you started that ballpark, the problem you're going to run into, now you're running into it. Okay, why don't we put a day center downtown? All right, then we can take these people off the street that the business people own, up here worried about, let them help finance the long-term part of the day center downtown, and then let them declare that on their taxes, and everybody come out good. Now, they said that when, somebody made a statement that what you're going to do about the, if you pass an ordinance with the homeless uptown, have the police, the police don't have time to be picking these people up. But if these, the transit people or whatever, homeless come back uptown, and you have a day center, have the police to pick them up and take them back down to the day center. That'll take care of that. I suggest that you go to Raleigh and see what they did. You, you, it's mind-boggling. We went up, I'm with the Community Awareness Alliance. We took a group of people, went up and looked at that day center. It's outstanding. Everything in there you think you would want is in there. So take a trip up there. Now, that, that's serious. Now, on a light note, Fayetteville, we have a, a group of basketball kids, AAU. I guess some of you probably heard about AAU basketball, the traveling basketball team. We have a sixth-grade team, eighth-grade team, and a fourteen-year-old team. We went up to Charlotte about two weeks ago, cleaned their clock for Fayetteville. We cleaned their clock, won the championship, so much until we got invited to Atlanta. We went to Atlanta this weekend. We stayed on two, had two days, two-day tournament. We played three games the first day, fourteen-year-old boys flying through the air like Michael Jordan. Fourteen-year-old, this tall, a bunch of them. They went down, they won their first day, three games, and came back the next day and flat there, cleaned their clock in the name of Fayetteville, North Carolina, up in Stone Mountain. And so I wanted to bring this, they made you proud. They made you proud, and the gym, the gym was packed. There were all kinds of news reporters, people there reporting on them, and they praised our kids like nothing you've ever seen in your life. So I want to let you know that Fayetteville got on the map in Atlanta, in Stone Mountain, Georgia. I guess some of you know where Stone Mountain, Georgia. That's where we played. And they played outstanding, so they made, they did you proud on this weekend. That's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Terry Samperton?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and staff. I'm here tonight to speak on the proposed changes on the UDO. There's been over forty changes recommended by this Advisory Board. Really, there may be a couple that needs a small amount of tweaking, but forty sounds ridiculous. A lot of thought, time, and meetings were held to come up with the UDO. The only reason for the UDO is to make Fayetteville look better. Will these be considered one by one, or will they be voted on in a package deal? This is nothing but a ploy to make Fayetteville go backwards. Please consider your important vote on this. Let's keep Fayetteville moving forward, not backwards. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Ethelene Holden Baker.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Fee. Good evening. Hold that microphone down. My name is Ethelene Holden Baker, and I live at eight-ten Executive Place, two-eight-three-zero-five. Council members, as you may recall, I stood before you approximately a year ago. The exact date was August eighth, two thousand eighteen, to address the same issue, homelessness. As then and now, I come before you not as a member of any organization, although I was a member of a particular church in Fayetteville, which I decided to withdraw because I believe in spirituality. And during that time, I was part of the interfaith network, so I know about the homelessness and certain situations. And many things were said last week were not true about the homeless, which I will not go into. But I come to you as a concerned citizen, a compassionate human, a compassionate human being, appealing to an elected body whom I perceive and hope you are concerned not only about the affluent, the upper-middle class, the well-to-do, but all citizens, including the least among of us, who also entitled to the basic needs of human beings: food, clothing, shelter, and human well-being, health care. However, based upon the council's passing of previous ordinances and consideration of another one, I am beginning to doubt if I should have such high expectations of you. In January two thousand eight, the council passed an, an ordinance that made it illegal to panhandle anywhere in this city after dark and prohibit panhandling downtown at busy roadways up within fifty feet of ATM, ATM machines, as well as near outdoor dining areas. In March two thousand eighteen, the council voted nine to one to approve an ordinance to decre, to decrease panhandling that would ban vehicle occupants from giving or receiving items from pedestrians, which was later described as being a safety regulation. Quickly. Now, as you consider passing the anti-camping, anti-sleeping ordinance, keep in mind such laws do not push people out of homelessness. Rather than pass punitive laws or criminalize the unsheltered homeless, I strongly urge you to work closely with the county commissioners to address and help eradicate the situation. Consider the proposal I presented to you in August of last year. I'll talk with you later. Thank you.
All right, good evening, Council. I'm Gerard Falls, and I live at one hundred Bradford Avenue, and I'm going to cut a few things out that have been said already. I do have a statement to read from Cape Fear and the Visible about the homeless ordinance. First of all, I would like to say that as much as I would love to write a letter to my congressional representative, I don't have one. Neither does about half our city because of rampant election fraud in Blading County and Robinson County. So I can't wait to be able to do so again. Early voting starts August twenty-first, final election day for Dan McCready, September tenth. Now on to the statement. It's well past time for Fayetteville and Cumberland County to take a leadership role in coordinating and providing services for our homeless population. Recent statements from leaders of some local organizations whose missions include working with the homeless population, as well as members of this city council, all well-meaning, well-meaning people, I truly believe, indicate that prejudice, paternalism, and religious moralism take precedence over evidence-based practices and policies. We're also concerned that the interests of donors and businesses are placed ahead of the interests of the homeless population, which is entirely inappropriate from organizations whose stated mission includes humanitarian aid and assistance. Additionally, and this goes back to who's running our homeless shelters, we have a LGBTQ homeless population in our community who often do not feel safe and affirmed when they enter religiously affiliated organizations, often with anti-LGBTQ positions. Children growing up in poverty in Fayetteville have among the worst outcomes in our nation. Cumberland County is identified as a Tier One county among the most distressed in North Carolina. Ultimately, homelessness is the result of an economic system that values the, values the accumulation of money over the well-being of people. Arguments suggesting that homelessness is a, is a choice are nothing more than attempts to protect our economic system from scrutiny at the expense of those living in poverty and homelessness. We need the leadership of our mayor, our city council, and our county commissioners and community organizations to help bring lasting progress for people living in poverty and homelessness in Fayetteville and Cumberland County. And we have a little bit of time left, and, and I know that this has been tabled until August, and that the, the marching orders to the professionals in the city, who I think will do a fantastic job to study this, have gone out. I mean, we, we went online on Sunday and put together a needs assessment survey based on some national needs assessment surveys and conducted it at Seth Swish and at the bus station. You can do it on a Google form for free. You get all the metrics and, and results for it. It's fantastic. Now, this isn't scientific. This isn't, didn't, it's not comprehensive enough, and it didn't touch enough people. But we can actually get real information about homelessness, look into things like Homes First, where addressing the, the, the problem with homelessness is that people don't have a home. You address that first is the, is, is the new model that is happening around the country. So I asked for the, all folks to work together and for the members of the city government who will be doing this study to please make sure it's evidence-based and best practices. Thank you.
Ms. Sharman Toba? She left. Okay. Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Charles Matthews.
Welcome back, Mr. Matthews. Haven't seen you in a while.
Good evening. I'm Charles Matthews. I live at thirty-six eighteen Tenmore Court, Fayetteville, North Carolina, and I know most of all you, and you know me, and you probably know what I'm here to talk about is flooding, and it's that time of year again. And I agree with some of the councilmen, there are some things that are kind of criminal about what's going on in the city of Fayetteville, and that someone should do something about it. I went out to the old Kate, uh, Wacoe Building and talked with some of the FBI's out there some time ago, and it, you know, they didn't do too much, they didn't, just, I just talked with them. But tonight, I, my question is to, directly to the city manager and planning, are we ready? Do we have water reservoirs to keep the city from flooding? As a ex-planning commissioner, I know we are not ready. It's coming from Little River through Texas Pond, Rose Lake, into Big Cross Creek. For many years, I was the city flood gatekeeper on Big Cross Creek. It's unfortunate that you have allowed Mick Nolan and PWC to continue to do as they please by turning this monster loose on the city of Fayetteville. They have caused some families to lose their homes and land. Not a good way for the city to accumulate property. We will see flooding yearly if we don't control the flow of water into Big Cross Creek. And also, excuse me, as long as Mick Nolan is part of PWC, we thought- we thought he was fired with Reed Larry. They changed his job title, but he still runs PWC. Thanks to all of you for the job you're doing. And thanks to your family, and let God bless you and your family. But we need to do something about this flooding that what we can do. There are many lakes around here that can be used as a water reservoir. And I know from personal experience, Big Cross Creek wouldn't be flooding if it wasn't for Mick Nolan and PWC. And I'm quite sure the city manager know that, too. Because I've been here for a long time. I've been talking about this for a long time. When I was a city planning commissioner, we went over this. And it should be criminal for what's going on. Like I said, he's still running the city.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
Well, we got them all in. So we thank you for your comments. As I said before, we're not allowed to make commentary. This is your time to speak to us. But we clearly hear what the citizens have to say. So we thank you for that. Thank you for your patience tonight. Item 10.01, the adoption of fiscal year budget 2019 to 2020, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to give these folks a chance that they want to leave so they don't have to sit through this?
I wanted to spend some time with them. But if you all would like to stay, you can. If you'd like to leave, you can do that. But you're certainly welcome to stay. All right, Mr. Hewitt.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin, and members of council. Before I get started, I would like to thank each of you for your time and consideration that you've given to the staff since January, where we began our strategic planning processes, and your time that you spent with us as well, covering the CIP, TIP, and Strategic Plan. I'd also like to thank some of the key staff members who put the budget together. Some of them you hear about, some of them you may not in the past. But of course, we've got Tracy Broyles and Kelly Olivera and the entire budget staff. We have Christoph Bauer, Telly Whitfield, and Angel Wright Lanier, as well as Barbara Hill, who served in an interim assistant city manager position to the creation of this budget. I'd also like to thank our city attorney, Karen McDonald, and you'll understand why in just a few moments. But in addition to that, I'd also like to thank Rebecca, who's here as well for her work with the Strategic Plan, and Dwayne Campbell, our CIO, who helped put together our Technology Improvement Plan. So in getting started, I presented the budget to you on May 2nd. It was released to the council on May 2nd, and was presented to the council on May 13th. The document has been available for public review in the office of the city clerk, as well as on the city's website. As you'll recall, you held the public hearing on Tuesday, May 28th. The council deliberated on the recommended budget at three special work sessions, as well as a regular work session, and those are on the screen. And council has provided direction for changes to the recommended budget, for which I will cover in just a moment. On the screen are the proposed changes to the general fund budget for fiscal year 2010. The changes to the general fund budget are consistent with the changes discussed with the council at the May 22nd budget work session, except for the change to freeze one of the two vacant police city attorney positions in lieu of eliminating the added assistant fire chief position. I've spoken to the city attorney about this, and we believe that with some changes that she's making in her office, as well as at the police department, that this will not have a direct impact in the foreseeable future. But again, we are freezing that position, not eliminating it. We also proposing to use fund balance. $1.5 million for the Hay Street Parking Deck, which the council approved, up to $1.5 million that you approved for the Hay Street Parking Deck earlier tonight. $45,000 for Hurley Plaza. $200,000 for redevelopment site infrastructure. $150,000 for municipal agreements for Gillis Hill Road. And $130,000 to be transferred to the parking fund, which I'll cover in a little bit greater detail in just a second. There are also changes to the proposed E911 fund budget, since I gave you the manager's recommended budget, namely that we received an update from the State 911 Board stating that we would have a reduction of $1,500, and that is also reflected in the budget, which we're hoping that you will adopt later tonight. The proposed changes to the parking fund are on the screen, namely the main change that council will recall was the reduction of the special event parking fee from $10 to $5. That necessitated a variety of changes to the budget, and those are shown on the screen. $93,000 is also included for the extended enforcement hours. And as the council is aware, the mayor has called for a special meeting on parking on the 19th at 5:00, when we will cover this in even more detail as well for the downtown merchants and residents. Along with those changes, they're also proposing that we would increase the budget for $37,000, to help pay for some additional, 34 pay stations that will be paid for over four years. This is an increase over what was in the original budget, whenever we had the special event fee at $10 versus $5. There's also projected decrease to what we were thinking we were going to put to fund balance of $52,000. And also, the expenditures changes work out to be $77,000. And then we have corresponding revenue offset at the bottom, which also totals $77,248. There are also changes to the proposed airport fund budget for fiscal year 2020. And Mr. Widdit covered some of those earlier tonight, but those are on the screen as well. Essentially, it's $830,000 transfer to the Airport Capital Fund. And again, you see the expenditures and revenues. The money is coming from his fund balance, or his net assets at the airport, of $830,000. One of the major changes to the proposed budget from what was recommended was the maintaining of the current solid waste fee and not taking staff's recommendation to increase that for a dollar and a quarter per month. That did require us to do some rebalancing of the budget, as well as for us to make a transfer from the general fund of about $372,000. But again, we were able to balance the budget, as well as, as you can see at the bottom, some of it coming from fund balance, as well as we're projecting a modest 1% savings on fleet maintenance. And again, those are made in an effort to balance the Environmental Services Fund budget for fiscal year 2020. The proposed changes to Stormwater probably was one that took up a lot of time for the council, as well as staff. As you know, the council gave direction at your last meeting that we will be bringing you back policy that we hope will adopt, that will focus on the city's maintenance responsibilities on and off the right-of-way. Their council also directed that we would increase or transfer an additional $1.8 million from the Stormwater Fund balance for us to be able to set up a variety of programs to assist homeowners and property owners who have issues off the right-of-way. And in order to make that happen, you'll see on the screen that we have, again, corresponding expenditures and revenues related to that, namely that we are making a fund balance appropriation from Stormwater of $1.8 million. So rolling that all up, what does that look like? The total budget across all funds, from what was recommended to you by myself and the management team, went from $228 million across all funds to $229 million. And that below shows that the increases are corresponding to the increases or decreases which were on the preceding slides, namely for the general fund. It is showing an increase. For Environmental Services Fund, it is showing a decrease. And Transit Fund is remaining the same. And the others, you can see the differences between what was recommended and then what has been revised and is ready for your adoption tonight. So Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but at the appropriate time, the recommended action that staff would ask that you take is to adopt the following items: the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget ordinance, the 2019-2020 fee schedule, the 2019-2020 Strategic Plan, the 2020-2024 Capital and Technology Improvement Plans, Capital Project Ordinance is 2020-1 through 2020-13, and Capital Project Ordinance Amendments 2020-1 through 2020-19. And again, sir, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. So, council, we have any questions for the manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, push it again if you had it. All right, Councilman Hare, and then Dawkins.
Just for clarification for myself, probably. Whenever we put together, have discussion on the policy for the off-road or off-ramp...
Off right-of-way.
Off right-of-way for...
Stormwater, yes, sir.
Stormwater. Is that a part of the special meeting?
For the 19th? No, sir.
Is that just parking? So when is that going to be? When are you going to be presenting that policy back to us?
It is my hope that we will have that ready for the 24th. Christoph, is that the 24th? We hope to have that back to you on the 24th, so that the council can adopt that. And then we'll be able to set in motion those programs that we also talked about with you at your special meeting.
Okay, now with that, because I don't know if we're going to be looking at budget at that time, but whenever we look at the off-road...
Right-of-way.
Off right-of-way, are we going to be giving suggestions? Is there going to be a priority list from members? I mean, how are we coming up with those particular items?
Yes, sir. Well, there were three components to the programs that staff recommended to council. The first were truly small projects, under $10,000, which should take one to two days. Some of those have already been culled from the list of complaints and concerns that we've received from citizens in the past, and we have that list. And the idea is that that list, we will come back or will work with the Stormwater Advisory Board to come up with a ranking criteria for those. And once that ranking criteria is established, and that may come back to council, if that's the council's choice, we would then begin working on those programs in the next fiscal year. You then also have directed that there would be additional money put toward spot repair or the larger projects. And that is where I think we're going to really rely on the Stormwater Advisory Board, and probably on the city council as well. There have been, in moving that program forward, we have, we will make a recommendation to the Stormwater Advisory Board and the council about how those programs might be ranked. Something, for instance, if the project that's being considered is one that, if not completed, may cause loss of life. One may be that it may, the second criteria may be that it causes loss of property or home. And then third, it may just be nuisance.
Talking about priorities now.
Yes, sir, for the larger project. But the council also discussed that if there were program, I mean, projects for which a homeowner or a property owner were interested in partnering with the city, to say that they were willing to pay some of the cost, or that that might factor somewhat in how the projects are ranked. That's something that would have to come back to council for us to clearly identify what your interests would be in that ranking order. But those projects, because of their nature and size, I would envision that those would be one that it would take us several months to cull and vet those. Then some of them might actually have to be designed. And it would probably be just like your five-year plan, where we'd be able to look out and tell a person that this repair will take another year or something like that. And then the third program are the ones which are in the hopper, those transitional programs, projects, such as the one that we have had some conversation about.
So, Mr. Manager, if you all, that's more policy. I know we were going to try to zero that in on policy. But tonight is budget tonight, the money to pay for. Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be quick. I want to thank you, Mr. City Manager. In my four years, this will be the first budget I'm going to vote in the affirmative. I want to thank you for that. And thank the staff, especially. And the biggest reason is that $1.8 million for additional for these stormwater emergency repairs. We face, we're looking at a $200 million problem in our watershed. So stormwater is going to be the problem of our time. I know it's not exciting. I get emails that say, "Why don't you get on to something else?" This is a huge problem in our community. And I think it was Councilman Art talked last time about hurricane season now. Some of you talking about we got over nearly eight inches of rain in like five days. I mean, it's coming. So we're trying to do something about it. That's what I want the citizens to know. I want to thank Shewood, Thomas Ambat, John Larch, all those that are involved with the Stormwater Advisory Board. I want to thank Council Lady Waddell, and Councilman Colleton, and Councilman Wright for working with me on the Stormwater Committee. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your commitment to fixing and working towards fixing stormwater problems. Thank you.
Sir, Councilman Chris.
Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir.
Refresh my memory. Did we go up on any fees? Did we increase any fees on the fee schedule?
Yes, sir. There were some proposed minor fee adjustments in the fee schedule, but the ones that the council and the community tracks, such as your ad valorem tax rate, your transit fees, your solid waste fees, and your stormwater fees, those have not increased. But there were smattering of fee increases, which are in the rear of the budget. Some of those, I don't have that list in front of me, but I can grab it out of my bag. But they were minor annual fee increases that we typically would do.
So you're proposing $229,669,609?
Yes, sir. It's big money.
Is that what you project in income and revenue?
I believe, yes, this is a balanced budget, sir. That's another way of...
And that's what you project in expenditures?
We are...
Or less?
Yes.
Hopefully less.
Yes, sir.
We have to be prepared.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Councilman Chris. Councilman Waddell?
Thank you. Admittedly, I have not yet been able to review the, I guess, the email that's gone out about a meeting about parking, but I do have a question about parking.
Yes, ma'am.
If that model shifts, the paid parking model, how does that affect this budget?
That would be a mid-year adjustment that we might have to make. A lot of what we do in the parking fund are based on projections. And what I think that you'll hear on the 19th, and what we will see when council adopts a parking strategy, is that some of those assumptions will be high, and some of those assumptions will work out to be low. But at the end of the year, or mid-year, we'd probably come back and try to truce some of that up if it were too low.
Bugging amendment.
Yes, sir, it would be an amendment. But at this point, based upon the direction that council gave us at your last meeting, which is to enforce time limits until 9:00, as well as on Saturday, we believe that the parking revenues and parking program expenditures, which were included in the budget tonight, we feel fairly comfortable about those. Depends on the changes that council might make.
And that was going to be my question. So very specifically, if the council comes together and we do a 180-degree turn on our parking solution, how does that affect this budget?
It might leave a hole in the parking fund that we would have to make up through some other means.
And what is the parking, what is the parking fund? Refresh my memory. What is the parking fund allocated to pay toward?
The parking fund covers, again, the parking costs. It also would go to, I think, over the life of the repayment of the debt, I mean, of the stadium. We had projected, I think, $4.6 million going to the repayment of the stadium. I think it was 4.6.
Over 30 years.
Over 30 years.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Councilman Art.
Mr. Manager, music to my ears. I want to hear it one more time. No tax increase? No fee increase?
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure the public hears that.
Of those four that we track.
Okay. And so no tax increase to pay for the baseball stadium?
That was council's promise, and that's budget delivers on that.
And we delivered on that. What's the fund balance, the percentage and the actual dollar amount?
If adopted as proposed and on your screen, you would end up with 12.57% fund balance. And that works out to be, I have to think again, Tracy Broyles, because she gave me... and that works out to be, I have to think again, Tracy Broyles, because she gave me that number, if I can find it. It works out to be $21,291,985.
Say that again, sir. Almost 22 million?
$21,291,985 at June 30, 2019, or 12.57%. Your goal is 12%, your policy is 10%.
Our goal's 12%, our policy's 10%, and the state requirement is 8%.
Yes, sir, there's difference in how the 8% is calculated and by home, but yes, that's.
Okay. The reason I bring this up is because we did talk about natural disasters like Hurricane Matthew, Hurricane Florence, and this is our rainy day fund. This is our ability to, when you look at those numbers, where we paid for, you know, an amount of money to get reimbursement, that we're able to do that without having a significant impact to our programs. So I want to, you know, congratulate you, Mr. Manager.
Thanks, sir.
I told you I wouldn't vote for this with a fee increase for a tax increase, but you're going to get my vote tonight. But I want to congratulate you and your finance team, Tracy, and all you folks, great job of being physically responsible for the city, and for helping us to keep things moving in the right direction and growing, so thank you.
All right.
Yeah.
Council, it's time to vote.
I have a question, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm brushing my red butt.
Yeah, I got your red, okay. Councilman Hare, yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to continue to follow up, Mayor, because you didn't let me finish. And I want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly about our off-right-of-way funds, and I know we're going to have a discussion about that later. But there was a part of money that we spoke of, it was that $1.8 million. Now, which is, if I'm understanding correctly, it's a part of this budget tonight. Okay. Is that also going to be some funding there for the off-right-of-way, or is that the future discussion that we're going to have? That's my conversation.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, then if that's okay, then my next question is, as far as the listing, or the priority listing, for those small jobs that are going to be fit within that $1.8 million, because I work council hard on this, and I don't want to be left out, guys. Where does that list come from? Again, I just want to ask that.
Well, some of them, the list comes from.
Well, my question is this, do I get an opportunity to actually give you? Okay, you see where I'm headed? That's the support that I want, to be able to give you priority listings for that $1.8. Because I know we're going to be shared among nine or 10, but that's my question, please.
So the way I think we understood it is that the council will approve some ranking system, but you encourage all of the people that you know who've called you, who continue to call you, to apply and go through the process that we set up, and then there's a ranking system that's assigned.
Okay, well, I'm fine with that, council, I'm just asking you all, don't forget about me now, because we worked hard that night.
But the council is to be commended, before I go to Mayor Pro Tim, just for the listing on this, we were spending about $200,000 a year for emergency repairs. The council has multiplied that by 10, and so $2 million for people who have stormwater-related emergencies. There's a process that we're developing, because we've never put those type of resources in place. We're having to hire additional staff members to work those, but the council should be commended on balancing this budget and putting emphasis on that. So I think that's part of the discussion, so you all hear kind of the superficial part of that, but that's what the nuts and bolts are. Mayor Pro Tim?
Right.
Councilman Hare, were you finished?
Well, Mayor, you keep cutting me off, I tell you, for some reason.
I'm trying to get out of here before tomorrow morning, before the sun comes up first.
But long as we're together now, and I just wanted to make sure that, because I've got residents that are hollering and screaming also, and I've been talking about this for a number of years, so I appreciate the support, but don't forget about me when I pour my items out for presentation.
I think that what you're hearing screaming is the rooster out there, I think the sun's coming up. So Mayor Pro Tim, let's get out of here.
I need to make this motion, this is my last time.
Yeah, well, we do need to thank the city manager, the budget staff, and as we do move the stormwater process forward for off-right-of-way spot repairs, it needs to be as non-political as we can make it. That way Ted Moan doesn't call 20 times, and mine raises above Mayor Colvin's. Using that Stormwater Advisory Board to rank this and give us recommendations, we need to keep the politicians out of it, except for bringing those projects to the city's attention. Thank you.
Do y'all hear that?
All right, so Councilman Chris?
Mr. Mayor, it would please me to move for the adoption of the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget ordinance and fee schedule, and the fiscal year 2019-2020 strategic plan, and the fiscal year 2020-2024 capital and technology improvement plans, and the capital project ordinances 20-20-1 through 2020-13, and the capital project ordinance amendments 20-20-1 through 2020-19. That is my motion.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilmember Chris, it's second by Councilmember Wright. I think we have discussed the motion, but discussion phase is here. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes to adopt.
Ms. Jensen still with us?
Uh, Ms. Jensen, you still with us?
Green.
All right. All right, Madam Clerk, that is nine to one. Those voting in favor of the budget, Councilmember Chris, Cullington, Art, Wright, Colvin, Moan, Jensen, Hare, Dawkins, voting in opposition, Councilmember Waddell.
Motion to adjourn.
No, no, no.
Got one more item.
No.
It says, Councilman Chris, item 10.0 is the presentation recommendations.
Yes, sir.
Appointment committee.
He's got an early start in the morning, but I'm going to do this as quickly as I can. Direct your attention to 10-02, the presentation from the appointments committees, and we are prepared to do the recommendations for the Board of Advisors for the Woodpecker's Capital Reserve Account. They are required, or we are required, to have a Capital Reserve Account, and that is to be overseen by a Board of Advisors. And that board consists of one appointed by the operators of the stadium, one appointed by the master development of the project, and this immediate surrounding area, that's PCH, and one appointed by the then-current holder of the naming rights, that's by Segra, and then six appointed by the city, and that is us. And our recommendations to you, my colleagues, for the Board of Advisors for the Woodpecker Capital Reserve Account, is Mr. George Brief. All of these will be from June 10, 2019, through September 31, 2021. We strongly recommend Mr. George Brief, Mr. Dennis Corbin, Mr. Terrence Stratter, Mr. Peter Aubrey, Mr. Joseph Koker, and Mr. Doug Hewitt. Those are our six recommendations to you for appointment to the Board of Advisors for the Woodpecker's Capital Reserve Account.
Thank you, Councilmember Chris. Councilmember Art?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor. When we get to discussion, I'll make a brief comment.
That is my, that is the recommendations of our appointment committee, and I was hoping the other number of the appointment committee would make the motion. We got a second before the motion.
Wonderful, that's good, that's good business. I make a motion that we accept the recommendations to the, let me get the verbiage correct, to the appointment, I recommend that we accept the Appointment Committee recommendations for the Board of Advisors for the Woodpecker's Capital Reserve Account.
That's your motion.
That is the motion.
It's a motion by Councilmember Waddell, it's the second by Councilmember Art, and discussion on the motion, Councilman Art?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank the Appointment Committee. Mr. Chris, thank you, it is late, and I do start early, and so I'll be brief. This is an important fund. When we were preparing the lease with the Houston Astros for the stadium, it was important that we set up a mechanism for any kind of future capital cost to the stadium, any improvements or things that would have to be performed to make the stadium a better fan experience, that we would have a specific funding mechanism. And this committee will oversee that fund, and that fund is, the revenue stream for that fund comes from ticket sales. Once we reach 50,000 tickets sold each year annually, when you get to 50,001, $1 of every ticket from that point forward goes into that fund, into that maintenance fund, and that's how the revenue is generated. And that's not just for baseball, that's for all activities that are revenue generating at the stadium throughout the year. So if they have a concert or a monster truck rally, a dollar from every ticket after 50,000 goes into that fund to help us have a maintenance fund capability, and that takes pressure off of our general fund and off the city's budget, and that's just good business, so.
And please add that we've exceeded 50,000.
And we well exceeded 50,000 early on, just in the baseball season this year, so I want to thank all the citizens. You know, every time you come to a game, you're contributing to the maintenance fund. A dollar is contributing to the maintenance fund, and it's really important. We've got a beautiful stadium, it's a great venue, and we want to keep it state-of-the-art and keep it looking good as we move forward. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, council, no further discussions, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Jensen?
Green.
Green, all right, it's unanimous, Madam Clerk. All right, y'all have a good evening, Mo.
Thank you.